And I'm going to take a minute just to say that I would like to do it a little different this year, and since I'm in control, I get to do that. And I'd just like to start off by saying this is my second time as the city council president. And I would just like to say why and what I think the characteristics that are necessary for a good council, as a good council president would be. One of the main goals is working with the mayor and the city manager on setting the agenda. So that means that you're open to have councils call you and give you ideas of what they'd like to see on the agenda. You need a good working relationship with the city manager and the mayor for that reason. I also feel that, because that happens two times a month. Once a month, we, in the best world, have a meeting with the board of commissioners. It hasn't always been the case, and that was actually one of my goals, was to try to amend that, but it was very difficult. But I think to have a working relationship with the county commissioners and be able to speak with them is important if we're ever going to get across that divide. To take the place of the mayor, as I am doing today, in the case of, you know, when the mayor can't be here for a meeting or a workshop. Also, the role of the mayor is to get out to breaking, cutting ribbons, and being out in the community. And there's a lot of things that go in besides just what you see, because as a council president, you're kind of representing and going through a lot of committees. And that's one of the things that myself, and as the fact that I have planning not to run again, I'm going to have to start giving up some of those positions, because I do work with the Chamber of Commerce, I do work with the Business Retention and Expansion Committee, I do work with the Transportation Committee, I work with RV Act and am the chair for the MR MPO. I also am the liaison for the Destination Marketing Organization and the person for RV COG. So there's a lot of outside contacts that you need to make outside of the time, other than being just on this, as on dais. So I just want to state that and say, for those reasons, I think a person will need to have time, and I think they need to have good working relationships. And so there's been several people who have shown interest in becoming city managers. So I'm going to ask those people who are interested in stating why they would like to be the next council president, and then afterwards, we will have a vote. So if anybody would like to speak up, who is in, would like to run for council president, I'm going to ask that you speak up now. Okay, Vanessa?
Thank you. I would be honored to serve as council president for this year. I think over the last few years, I have taken the time to learn the ins and outs of not only being a counselor, but what it takes to be a council president as well, by observing for three years that position. I am confident that not only the organizational skills that I have would be a huge benefit to council to help the mayor and city manager keep agenda scheduling on track with the direction given by council. I'm confident that I would be able to step in for the mayor in the event that she's absent. I feel committed strongly to working with everyone, albeit when anyone has concerns or if they have policy ideas. I think that my ability to locate and recall information from past meetings and direction given by council could be an asset. I understand the importance of representing the council's majority's decisions when going out to the public or when speaking with interest groups. I would be devoted to being a conduit of information for anyone that needed it, if that's the city manager, if that's the mayor, if that's any of the counselors that we work alongside. And I also think it's equally important that the president is someone who is well aware of the material within our packets and the material needed to make decisions. I'm confident that I do have that ability and that I have shown myself to be well-prepared for every meeting. And equally, I think it's important that the council president is someone that holds themselves to a high standard and those around them. I think that that provides the opportunity for professional growth, not only personally, but as the group as well. I'm confident in my ability to handle difficult situations and see a positive outcome. With all of that considered, I would be honored to serve the role. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Rick?
I would be honored to be considered as a candidate for the president of the council. I feel I have excellent attendance in almost every workshop and council meeting. I've been active on two committees, Solid Waste and Middle Row MPO on transportation. Also, I recently assembled a team to evaluate the pros and cons concerning funding. I have 14 years of experience serving on the council. And also, I consider the working relation with the council and the staff is very important with trust and teamwork as being the emphasis. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else? All right. With that, I'll ask you, we have a ballot on our dais for council president appointment. If you would please fill that out and pass it my way. And actually, DJ, I'm not DJ, Dwayne's online, so I'm probably going to have to get my phone out so he can text me, or you can give me his thoughts, Karen. It's a light, it's the same color as the packet, so you might miss it.
Val, can I ask a question?
Yes, Brian.
So after this, just, I'm wondering the process. So then you get these, and then you read it off, and then someone makes nomination, and then there's opportunity for comment, and then there's a vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't have my phone, so at this point in time, I'm going to need you, Karen, to give me Dwayne's.
He said DJ, so I'm going to give him the vote.
Okay. Well, this is what we have right now. We have two for DJ, we have three for Vanessa, and we have three for Rick Riker. So that kind of puts us at a stalemate, I guess, because there's nobody that stepped out. So we have to, at this point in time, ask some questions. If people have questions or have comments they'd like to make, we'll open it up. Brian?
Well, maybe it's, since there's three people in the running there, maybe it's a little premature to make a nomination, but I think what I would say is, I would advocate for Vanessa. She is proven to be super organized. She can recall information that the rest of us cannot very quickly. Her record-keeping skills are fantastic. She is well-prepared. She does hold people to a high standard, and I feel like that's something that would be very useful in the council president role, especially now. And she's always prepared for meetings, and I just feel like she would be the most effective council president. Thank you.
And I would just like to add, and I agree with a lot of those statements, but the problem that I have with is the working relationship. I do not feel she has a very good working relationship with the city manager. I think some of the problems as a council that we've had this year with infighting have been a result of her comments being made. And so for that reason, I would go with somebody who has had more longevity. I don't think, I mean, she still will have the ability to pull things up and be great and organized, and I do appreciate those skills that she has. But I feel in terms of speaking for the entire council, I think that I'm not, I mean, she has told me that she's not comfortable being in one-on-one with the city manager. And I understand that that, this role is truly working, and I know that she holds everybody to a high standard, but I think sometimes that gets in the way. So personally, I think Rick would be, I think everybody on this council feels comfortable talking to Rick. We all do, because we know Rick will listen to both sides. And that's basically what I think a council president should do, is be able to listen to both sides and then just bring that information forward. So I'm just going to make a statement there. Anybody else want to make a comment? Yes, Vanessa?
I just would like to say that I feel more than comfortable having one-on-ones with our city manager. I don't feel uncomfortable whatsoever. I just view them as being unproductive. I think the three-on-ones, the direction that we gave to have quarterly three-on-ones is a better use of everyone's time. I know Erin is a very busy individual, so splicing out the one-on-ones, having eight separate meetings seems like a less effective use of time for everyone that's involved. So it's not that I'm uncomfortable, it's that I think the process could be improved. And I want everyone on council to know that my phone is always on and available for them to give me a call. I don't want anyone to feel like they cannot reach out to me. If I have ever been matter-of-fact and critical of, you know, a stance that someone has, and maybe I think differently than them, that doesn't mean that I am their enemy. It just means that I think differently.
Yeah, to echo, I guess, and I'm not trying to echo Brian, but I have independently the same, many of the same feelings about Vanessa's abilities. Clearly, she's, I would say it's, you know, certainly between her and Valerie, one and two, for who the best-prepared counselors are consistently on every issue. And what I'm most impressed with, I think, about Vanessa's preparation is that she's prepared on every issue. It's not just the ones that are hot to her, interesting to her. It's not, you know, she has a particular affinity towards any particular interest group, but she's prepared for all of it, all the time. And that's, I view the number-one attributes, important attributes for a council president as being extremely well-informed and assertive enough to speak up when it's appropriate. And frankly, and I'm not trying to, you know, embarrass anyone, I'm not trying to give a negative, these are things I told Rick directly the other day when I spoke with him about it. I know that he's not particularly well-prepared on issues that don't concern him. I believe he even said that on the radio last week, that he doesn't look at all the issues in the packet. He looks at the ones that are most important or interested to him, I guess. And, you know, when Valerie talks about the ability to speak for the entire council, and I said this to Rick the other day also, I seldom hear him speak for himself. I mean, he doesn't, doesn't speak up a lot of the time, lacks assertiveness. And while he has a big view because of all of the experience, his experience, he has kind of an institutional memory, because he's been here so long, there's times when, you know, after a meeting, he'll comment about, you know, he appreciated my comment or something like that, and during the meeting, never does. So I just don't see him having the assertiveness necessary, because that occasionally is necessary. And as far as the preparation goes, there's really no comparison between the two. You know, if we're looking for a perfect candidate, I don't know that we're going to find one out of the eight of us, but I think that Vanessa has more than enough in the plus column to do a really good job. And I'm confident that if we had an issue that myself or some of the other counselors wanted to be brought to agenda setting, or that maybe the council, maybe you'd already given direction several times to bring something to agenda setting, I'm confident that she would have no problem speaking up. And I just don't know, I don't have that kind of confidence in Rick that he would necessarily speak up if the situation were slightly uncomfortable. If it's slightly uncomfortable, I just don't hear him doing it very often. So I would definitely think that Vanessa's the better choice there.
Okay. So here we are, and once again, two people voted for Dwayne, I mean, for DJ. And so I'm going to say, at this point in time, DJ's out of the running, because Vanessa and Rick have tied at three. So I guess we run another vote, or?
We do have some blink ballots. Again, we can hand out to you if you'd like to do another one.
Okay. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Hey, Val.
Yes.
Is one option to potentially nominate and do a vote and see if it passes? Or should?
I would rather do the?
Okay.
I mean, as long as we've got him and we're here, I say let's do this, and then if we need to do that, we will. And does Dwayne have a comment online?
Yes, I want to vote for you.
So is that an abstention?
At least, uh.
Okay. So here we're stuck, 3-3. So I guess that the next step is to take a, somebody make a motion? Brian?
I would make a motion to nominate Counselor Vanessa Ogier for council president.
Is there a second? Rob? Okay. So I'll go through a roll of vote? Yes.
Is there an opportunity for comment before the vote?
Obviously, yes, if you have a comment.
Okay. Yeah. I just wanted to say, I've known Rick a long time. I've known Rick since I was friends, I've been friends with his son, and I had sleepovers at his house when I was a kid. I've known Rick for 30-plus years. I think Rick is a fantastic person. I am super happy here on council. I love our conversations that we have about different topics. And, you know, all that said, I just think, from an effectiveness perspective, I think Vanessa would be more effective in this role. So, you know, obviously, it's nothing personal, but I just wanted to state that I really appreciate working with you.
Joel?
So I would agree with Brian. This is nothing personal against either person, and they're both, just by their willingness to serve without pay, are complimentary. I view the role as council president as a facilitator, not as pushing their own position and not having the power to do that. And when I look at the two and their facilitation skills, I know Rick constantly asks other people what they're thinking. And his facilitation skills, I think, are stronger than Vanessa's at this point in time. And so that's why I'll vote for him.
And I would just like to add to that, another issue is that the facilitator is important, and I agree with that. But I also think the relationship with the city manager and the relationship with the board of commissioners. We know the board of commissioners as a difficult group to work with. I mean, that's just a fact. I think everybody can agree with that. But I know Rick has a relationship with them through the years, and it has been difficult to have and build out. And I think that by putting Rick in that position, I think we would have more success moving forward in that direction, as opposed to the logjam that we seem to be in right now. So for that reason, I will also vote for Rick. So with that, yes, Rob?
I guess I'm kind of glad you brought up the county commissioner thing. And quite frankly, Val, when you became council president, I had high hopes that, because I know that you have a, to some degree, working, but also a conversational relationship with them, and I was hoping that this would be the year, that, you know, we'll say those relations with law, and we would end up with, actually, the county commissioners remembering that the city is part of the county. And they didn't do it this year on a bunch of different issues. And frankly, to put that hope on Rick, I think is completely unrealistic, because you couldn't do it, and I don't believe it was probably due to any lack of trying on your part, or because you were not qualified to help that relationship along. But it didn't happen. So, you know, to say that, you know, we would hope that Rick would somehow pull that off, to say that any of us would pull it off when you couldn't do it, and again, I'm not faulting you, because I really thought you would be the one to be able to do it. I think that there, obviously, everyone always believes the faults on the other end, but I actually believe the fault is more with the commissioners than it is with anything that you may have presented. So I don't believe that that's actually something that I would ever consider when choosing council president. I'd want someone that effectively could represent the council in agenda-setting meetings, and I think that Vanessa is, got the potential, and likely, more than the potential, could actually, is much more likely to be able to do that.
Any other comments? Okay. With that, I'm going to take a voice vote. Brian, who do you vote for?
Well, the motion was for to nominate Counselor Ogier, so I'll vote yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Joel?
No.
Rob?
Yes.
Valerie? No. Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
DJ?
No.
No. So I'm going to make a motion? And my motion?
Not me.
Oh, what was?
Dwayne's no.
Dwayne's no, okay, thank you.
Mine's no.
So now I'm going to make a motion to nominate Rick Riker as council president for this coming year. Is there a second to that? Thank you, Joel. Any discussion? And I'm just going to say, at this point, we need to break a logjam. I don't know what the next step is, but I think this is important. So I'm going to, maybe we could do co-presidents, I don't know. Go ahead. How do you vote on a motion to put Rick?
I'll vote no.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Valerie? Yes. Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
DJ?
No.
Dwayne?
No.
No.
With Vanessa voting yes, that makes Rick the council president. So thank you for making that. Am I correct? Because Augustus said yes. You said yes.
I voted yes.
Yes.
It's a tie.
For doing that, I appreciate that. So with that, we have elected our fourth, three, our Rick as a council president for this coming year. And I hope that we can, my goal this year, more than anything, is for us all to come together. We know we don't agree on things, and I, that's okay. We have eight different people, they have eight different decisions from different people. Am I correct, Augustus, that? Okay, let me run through it again.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't hear whether Counselor Yunker had recused himself from this, or abstained from this vote?
I think he voted no.
He voted no.
He voted no.
Correct.
In that case, I'm counting one, two, three, four yeses, and then four nos.
Yes.
That's a tie.
Oh, it is a tie, because it was a no. Okay, you're right. I thought for some reason Dwayne was abstaining, like he did last time. Okay. We're back to zero. Okay. So I'm not quite sure where to go next.
Can I make a?
Any suggestions? Do we have a co? Is there such a thing as a co-president? No. Brian?
Well, I think, I think I would, this is probably an appropriate time to just really quickly touch on the, you know, the divide that council has been dealing with for a few years now, basically ever since, you know, myself, Rob, and Vanessa were elected on the council. And we're all aware of that divide, and we all talk about how much of a problem it is, and we all talk about, you know, we shouldn't, we should work on fixing it, which we haven't done. You know, one, and I didn't mention this earlier, because I didn't, I was kind of hoping I wouldn't have to, but one of my thoughts is that, you know, having Counselor Ogier as president, I feel like would go, you know, it would go a long way towards helping to bridge that divide, and it would do so in a very low-risk way. You know, there's nothing that, you know, I don't know, there's nothing really that the council president can do that's that bad, but I think that, you know, the show of good faith by, you know, the other, the, you know, more seasoned counselors to let her be council president, I think, would be a show of good faith, and it would help to kind of bridge the rift that there is on council in a pretty low-risk way. So I just wanted to share that.
Yes. Erin?
Counselor Yunker would like to speak.
Okay. Dwayne? Your floor is yours.
I move to nominate Counselor Fazer as a council president.
Say, speak a little louder, Dwayne.
I move to nominate Counselor Fazer as the council president.
Is there a second? Second from DJ? Okay. Any comments? Rick?
When we have a situation before the dais where it requires a tiebreaker, is the mayor available by phone to be a tiebreaker? Is that, is that a normal procedure or not?
She's not been part of the conversation. It counted as quorum in this.
Yeah. And I think this is a decision for the council, personally.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Any comments? All right. Motion on the floor is to elect DJ Fazer as the council president. I'll start at your end, DJ. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vanessa?
No.
Valerie? No. Rob?
No.
Joel?
No.
Brian?
No.
No. Well, that didn't pass either. So that was two yes, and one, two, three, four, five, no. So here we are, back at the?
Council, council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dwayne, I'm assuming he voted yes, so, since he made that motion. You voted yes, correct, Dwayne?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. So that motion didn't pass. So, and I agree with you, Brian. I think pretty well, we have a divide, and that's kind of what it comes down to. But that's also part of the reason that I like the most, I mean, I know Vanessa is very organized and brings a lot to the plate. I mean, I think she has every skill that's necessary. But I think under the situation, and after listening to or reading the employee survey that we requested and had, what I got from that survey was that the staff thought a lot of the problem came from council. And a lot of that problem was a result of inner bickering and comments being made, and side comments being thrown at different counselors, as well as staff. And I've never heard Rick call out anybody. And that's why I have a lot of respect for him. He may not be the strongest person in terms of speaking his mind, but he is the one person who can talk to every person on this council comfortably and not feel that they might be attacked. And I can't say that for Vanessa, because I know Dwayne and Vanessa have an issue. You know, I don't know where it comes from, it comes from a history, but that's why I am supporting Rick. And for that reason, I think that is the best solution. Brian?
Yeah. No, I hear where you're coming from. I think what I've experienced in seeing council presidents in my time on council is, you know, you act a little differently when you're council president than when you're just a counselor, because you are representing all of council. And I think that Vanessa fully understands that. And I think that, as you have, and as DJ has, and as Joel has, when you step into that council president role, you put on a different hat, and you realize that you have to carry yourself a little bit differently. And I have no doubt that she would be able to do that with every single counselor.
Well, yes. Erin?
So Augustus and I have briefly talked as a potential option for you, recognizing that it appears as though there's a desire for council to try to come together a little more in determining who's the right option for that, which I think any of you will be candidates. Just recognizing your desire to want to come together more is a key piece of moving forward. Maybe there could be some, a happy medium of, it would be unorthodox compared to previous years, but maybe you choose to nominate and elect a president and a vice president, and you have two individuals moving forward in that position. And I don't want to complicate things, but that's something also to consider.
Yeah. And I wondered the same thing. That's why I kind of said the co-president thing, because I think that both of them have strengths that they bring to the table. I think all of us have admitted that they have those strengths to bring to the table, and that might, you know, that can be a real plus. So with that, I'm not sure how we'd have to define the roles, would we have to define the roles? Or, I mean, one of the big things with council was the agenda setting, which I think was really wise of us to do this last year, is that we have a council, another counselor attend agenda-setting meetings. And that has been a positive, because that has, has, you know, the problem that we've had in the past with the Sarah, with, you know, with the mayor, and that, that was a problem. And so by bringing somebody else in, it's kind of softened that, and I think that's been very valuable. Erin, you want to add something, and then I'll come to you, Brian?
Counselor Yunker would like to have an opportunity to speak at some point.
Okay. Thank you, Dwayne. Yes, Dwayne? Yeah, can you turn Dwayne up just a little bit, because it's really hard to hear? Aaron, you want to add something and then I'll come to you, Brian?
Counselor Yunker would like to have an opportunity to speak at some point.
Okay, thank you, Dwayne. Yes, Dwayne? Yeah, can you turn Dwayne up just a little bit because it's really hard to hear? Dwayne, you got to yell. You got it.
Okay, can you hear me? Yes, I, I have issues with both Rick and Vanessa being president, obviously. That's why I didn't vote for either one of them. I just don't think Rick is able for the task. When I've been to meetings or stuff like that, he always wants me to speak for him. If he wants me to speak for him, then how is he going to be the, the council president? I need him to speak up. Vanessa definitely has issues with me and I don't see how she can represent me. And if she's not going to represent, she's going to be different when she's the president. I just don't think that's, why is she different now? So I definitely have those issues with her representing the council. And I am not for having both of them a president, a vice president or co-chair. So those are my, where I stand today.
Brian?
Well, there's been a fair amount said. So maybe someone has changed their mind. So just to double check, I'm going to nominate Counselor Ogier again for council president.
Is there a second? Vanessa? Rob? Okay, so Vanessa, president.
Question?
Yes. Rick?
So question, at this point, do we determine if we're looking at going forward with the president and vice president or we just have one, one issue? Okay, thank you.
So what your motion says, just one, it says no vice president, is that correct? Okay. Okay, so with the motion on the floor, I'm going to go ahead and take a vote. Vanessa as, oh yes, Rob, sorry.
So the last time when we were counting for, for Rick, how did Vanessa vote?
She voted yes for Rick.
She voted yes. I think that that's emblematic of, you know, her willingness to work with people. That should be really obvious. I mean, was anyone expecting her to say yes for Rick? I wasn't. Was anyone else here? I doubt it. I mean, it's as clear as can be that we have a candidate who's better prepared, more assertive and willing to be flexible and accept other people's viewpoints. This is really obvious. And at this point, anyone who disagrees with that, I mean, I just have to wonder if it's more tribalism, so to speak, which has been the problem that we've had on the council.
Well, we have a motion on the floor and at this point in time, we need to vote on the motion. So I'm going to start with Brian. How do you vote?
Yes.
DJ?
No.
Okay, just a minute here, organize my thoughts, I'm not used to doing this. Okay, Rick?
I would like to see the floor open for president and vice president. So because of lack of that, I will vote no at this time.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Valerie? No. Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
No.
So where we are here and Dwayne? Dwayne voted?
No.
No. So we're at our same place. So I'm going to make a motion and I will make a motion that Vanessa is president and Rick is vice president. And I'd like to see if there's a second on that. Thank you, Rick. So the motion on the floor is to have Vanessa as president and Rick as VP. So you either vote yes or no. So starting with DJ? Okay.
I think that's a terrible idea. I think that, that complicates this whole issue. You know, I, I, it's a way to skirt a difficulty that we're having right now and I just, I am adamant no about that.
Is that in the charter? Somewhere in the charter, there's ice and ice, president and president?
It's not in the charter. So it would just be something that we're strike out with on our own and build a role as we go.
I'm totally against this.
Okay. Rick?
I, I see as an opportunity for teamwork because I think at times we can represent different sides on issues. So I see it as an opportunity. I don't see a fight occurring as to who's going to do what or go to what meeting. I just see being a backup and helping to communicate. Thank you.
Okay, so you vote yes. Yes, you voted yes. Vanessa?
Yes.
Valerie? Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Yes. Joel?
No.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes. We did it. What's that?
Get the vote again?
Dwayne's vote?
No.
No. I think he's going to vote no. So no was Dwayne, no was DJ and no was Joel, correct? Yes. Brian, did you vote yes? Brian voted yes, Rob voted yes, I voted yes, Vanessa voted yes and Rick voted yes. Five, five, three, thank you because it helped me guess. So there we go. Now, we may need to re-write the roles, but I'm just going to say for starters, as we go off, I'm going to expect both of them to be at the agenda setting meeting and we'll go from there. So, yes, Brian?
So now do they do rock, paper, scissors to see who runs the meeting?
Well, I think they can have a discussion together and decide who would want to run the meeting. Oh, you mean right now from here on? I'm just going to say I'm going to run the meeting for the rest of this meeting because this, it just makes it easier at this point in time. Would everybody agree that that, since I started the meeting, that I might as well finish the meeting? Is there any problem with that? Anybody against that, right?
I mean, typically when, after the vote, the new council president takes the role, so it would, it would be out of practice.
And if that's what the council would like to have, I wouldn't willingly do that.
I, I think the new council president should get to work.
Any other comments? Maybe, do we need to make a motion or Vanessa, you want to take over as, I guess, is that what you're saying? Okay. All right. And that's Rick. That's fine with you, Rick? As a vice president, okay? All right, I will move. Does that mean we have to fight over Sarah's salad? And Rick, if you want to sit in the seat right here as the co. Yeah, Rick, you need to sit in my seat. So she's going to sit in Sarah's seat. That's how it works.
I would just like to say thank you, council, for your support. I really appreciate it. I'll do my best not to let you down. Next up on our order of business is public safety funding and I'll turn it over to you, Jacey.
Thank you, council president. Good afternoon. I do want to mention that I have two special guests on the phone. I have Josh Davis and Connor Ducksworth from HCL Companies. They're here to answer any questions at a high level as far as funding options and other services a company like theirs could provide as far as administration and implementation of certain options like a food and beverage and/or a sales tax. So our subject in summary today, I'm going to go over the funding options, look at our timeline. I have a general fund projection for the next fiscal year and future out years and then going over potential funding matrix to help you potentially make a decision. And the relationship to council goals is to enhance community safety. So one of the funding options is the food and beverage tax. As a recap, some of the pros is consumers pay for services, including outsiders. There are three organ cities to leverage from as far as their municipal code and how they practice. The cons of a food and beverage tax, it is subject to volatility, especially in the recent COVID experience. The, the entities and/or municipalities that had a food and beverage did see a decrease in those revenues. As well as a con for the City Grants Pass, there is no current staffing and infrastructure to support. And a potential timeline is five to six months to implement as a best case scenario and I'll go over a little bit of that in a little bit later. Another funding option is a sales tax. A pro is again, consumers pay for the services, which includes the outsiders. Some of the cons, it is again, subject to economic volatility. We currently at the City Grants Pass do not have current staffing and infrastructure to support it and there is no current organ city to leverage from. And a potential timeline because of the extensive municipal code that we think it may need to implement, we're looking at about 12 to 18 months. A utility fee, so one of the pros is passed to those who already use other city services. We currently have similar staffing and resources in place at the City Grants Pass. Con, it would be another fee on the utility bill and potential increased delinquencies. And potential timeline to implement this would be about 90 days for city staff. As a review of what the timeline we're looking at, we are in January of 2024 right now. Staff is currently preparing the budget. We are two short months away from potentially our LB discussion with council, which is where we solidify the general funds contribution potential LB projects and that sets up the May 2024 budget committee meetings. And then we would adopt the budget in June of 2024 and then the new fiscal year starts in less than six months. So to kind of go along with that timeline, a request for qualifications or an RFQ for a food and beverage tax administration vendor, we suspect is going to take between 45 to 60 days as that contract will be over a hundred thousand, which would need council approval. The implementation of a food and beverage tax, approximately 60 to 90 days is a best case scenario. And we're looking around a March 20th, 2024 is the last scheduled council meeting in March. And then a utility fee implementation at 90 days and kind of have a little bit of the starred, just to give you a visual, the potential ordinance that would be approved in March to give that direction. Because we don't have a potential administrative vendor for a food and beverage or a sales tax, we're looking for some of that direction today because it is going to take us 45 to 60 days to select a vendor and award that contract. Moving into the general fund projection, the current general fund estimation will need the inclusion of the council approved phased in additional staffing. And so I have the five-year outlook as far as projection. I just want to reiterate, as we get to, to years two through five, those projections are a little bit softer than, than year one. So the very left column of current level, that is our current staffing level as well as our current materials and services. As a projection of, we need about $3.3 million as a baseline potentially to continue the services that we are providing. And then as you go down below the $3.3 million, that is the potential incremental increase, which is an approximate, again, of the, the current staffing level. If we were to make revisions and/or reductions in staff, obviously those numbers would change. And then as you move across with the phase staffing, the first year is about $1.5 million and you can see based on the growth of the anticipated costs of those FTE costs, you're getting a little bit over a hundred thousand to 200,000 a year as a $2.1 million increase to the budget over those five years. And then as you move all the way out to the years two through five, that potential increase is $18.2 million for the 26 public safety FTE and a total of 29 FTE that have some link back into the general fund. I don't think that the, the total cost is going to be $18.2 million as we have vacancies, we have savings, we have due diligence as far as being good stewards of our money, but this is again, a projection if we were to have some savings and the potential growth of what we're seeing as far as inflation right now. So as a refocus, I just want to make sure that we look at year one, that we are looking at potentially a $3.3 million shortfall with the current staffing and then adding a potential $1.5 million for the, the seven public safety FTE for about a $4.8 million increase for year one. Yep.
It'd be helpful when you refer, because you're reading pretty quickly and most of us are looking down at our page, when you say, you know, to say a row that begins with 3.3 million and if you could reference what dollar amount you're talking about, you know, when you begin a new subject, it would be easy for us to follow because otherwise you're talking really quickly and I'm trying to figure out where on the page you're even talking about.
Yep. So, does this help with the laser pointer now?
The pointer would absolutely help. Thank you very much.
So the $3.3 million in, in year one? And then here is the year one add of the $1.5 million and the anticipation of about a $4.8 million increase for both of these, the current level plus the addition of seven public, public safety FTE.
May I ask a question? I'm just trying to understand that first column that says current level and I think I understand what that is. Is that, is that the ask of the general fund for public safety?
Actually, that is less than the ask for public safety. That is for the general fund to break even. And so the difference potentially you're looking at between the $4.8 million, public safety is actually going to require close to $8 million in total.
In total, general fund?
Correct.
Okay, so the, those numbers in current level, that's above and beyond what's currently, what the general fund's currently providing?
Yes. So currently, the general fund gives about $5.5 million as far as general fund resources. I anticipate we need to keep our current level of service in the general fund in total to be about $3.3 million in addition to currently what we are giving it.
Okay, I think I got it.
Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah, thanks.
Jacey, I have a question. I just, in looking at and going to years two, three, whatever, I'm trying to remember exactly because I know that we all agreed as a council that we needed to move forward with the increase because of where we were with Warren's discussion last time. And was it, was it every year we were adding more? I'm just kind of trying to remember exactly what, how that factored in over five years.
Yep. So the first year is about nine FTE and seven are public safety. Year two is eight FTE. Year three is four FTE and you can see that that incremental decrease as you go. And year five is another four FTE. And the, the reason for those differences is they are different positions and so they cost differently.
Okay. And so those are an adding, adding on all the way up to where we ultimately ended up at the end of five years with, what was the total?
That's the $18.2 million on the, the right.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Powell?
So the $18.2 million, that is with, that would have been with all of the additions that were proposed last time? That's the 29?
That is correct.
Okay. I think, Valerie, you said that council agreed to that last time? Is that what we agreed to? We wanted figures for the, I don't believe we gave a positive on that.
Well, I think the direction we gave at that point in time was to map it out like that, that we knew we needed to up the ante from where we were, if I'm not mistaken. Aaron?
Aaron, please.
To maybe help clarify the line of questioning that I'm understanding is, yeah, year one, we are looking at nine FTE in, for public safety. Year two through five, we had a projected amount that we would be requesting. That would be, need to be in association with council approval each one of those years along with council identifying the, the funding mechanism, the stair stepping. You would still need to stair step any additional revenues that would be associated with the stair stepping and additional level of service that we'd be asking for. So right now, the focus really is that year one, the, the additional 1.5 plus the 3.3 for the 4.8 for budgeting for fiscal year 24. So year two, we would be having a workshop saying, here's what year two projection is, here's the, and let's say you choose one or two different funding mechanisms for fiscal year 24. We would be coming to you saying, okay, here, based on the current funding mechanisms, if you were, if we were moving forward with the plan, here's the rates that we'd be needing to look at in order to make that plan a reality for fiscal year 25. And then we do the same thing in 26 and the same thing in 27. And then we do the same thing in 26 and the same thing in 27.
Thank you for that clarification because I do remember hearing it from J.C. as well as our previous that you really can't predict five years out. Basically, you're just working at this year and knowing that every year you have to reanalyze because it has to go in front of the budget committee. So, thank you.
I have another question.
Counselor Pell.
J.C., I've been trying to figure out.
Microphone.
I've been trying to figure out on, we go back to the blue side, like under current level, and you've got years one through five. So why is that not a the same percentage of difference every year? Like, why does the, why does that percentage of difference from the prior year change?
That's a good question. I actually physically did each line by line almost. And so in year 28, which is year four, why that is larger is we have a balloon payment coming up for our public safety debt service payment. And so each year, they're not necessarily the exact same expenditures that are expected.
So how common is that to have a balloon on the debt service? I don't know, just the first I've heard that, I don't know.
It's a it's a problem I need to solve before fiscal year 28.
And when was that set up? When was that balloon?
So that would have been initiated 2018 as far as the initiation of that debt service. And so that was something well before my time.
All right, so we can we can all thank the 2018 council for thinking ahead.
J.C., go ahead.
So on the dais, I have two different matrices like we did before. And I'll kind of explain those really quick. So on the left-hand side, you're going to get the tax rates as well as the approximate tax revenues for that rate. So I have two different matrices here, one with a food and beverage tax and one with a sales tax, as well as matching that up incrementally potentially with a utility fee. And so your your public safety utility fee revenues are at the top with the most common rate in the transportation model structure, which is singly single-family residential. And then you can combine each one of those rates and/or tax percentages to come to the middle as far as what those would be if you want to mix and match depending on what that percentage and/or utility fee may look like. And as a reminder, here is the transportation-public-safety rate structure. You could see the number of accounts. Single-family residential makes up about 80% of the the accounts. And the ratio there on the right, if I can get my pointer over here, is the ratio based on every dollar for the single-family residential rate, you can multiply that ratio by each one of these to come up with a new rate. Another reminder, the transportation model is the closest correlated to the residential versus commercial split as far as calls for service. It was about a residential-to-commercial 50-50 split. And so we're about a 60-40. When we looked at the water meter size, it was 85% residential. And then when we looked at a per account, it was 91% residential. So the transportation model was the most correlated to the data that we saw in calls for service. So the call to action is at council's discretion, and I have that kind of timeline up there again. And then we're looking for council to provide direction to prepare ordinance for adoption associated with the council identified funding mechanisms. And there are the the various funding mechanisms again. And I will remind you that Josh and Connor are on the line as well to potential potentially take any specific questions that you may have for them.
Before we move on to the gentleman on the phone, does anyone have any questions about the presentation? Counselor Lovelace?
I just want to go back to the matrix because that to me, I have to really understand it. And there's a lot of colors and a lot of numbers and a lot of things. And so I want to make sure that I'm understanding that the blue represents the food and beverages percentage and the numbers from that. The orange represents the transportation fee.
That's correct.
Correct. And the yellow is the combination of the two.
So in the middle here is the combination of the two.
So and I guess, and what's the green? So I guess that's what I just really, before I can speak.
I did miss something. So there are different colorations for the years. So I have year one, which is this kind of bluish color. It doesn't show up very well on the screen. But then year two is orange and yellow. You can kind of see it kind of progresses out through the matrix. And where those numbers align to are the total add for each of these years for year five as a potential maximum add for all five years. So again, if that, just to reiterate what Aaron talked about as a city manager, potentially you may not make that decision to implement all five years. So it would be somewhere in between potentially.
Okay, so that's so there's not exactly a number that comes and meshes them together if we did.
So as an example, if you wanted to instill a 1% food and beverage tax and a 339 single-family residential rate, you would get about $1.6 million in revenue.
Okay, so I'm just saying, if you were to do a 1% sales tax and a the three-point, the lowest on the, show me where that.
So if the food and beverage, the other page?
Uh huh.
Are you on the food?
I'm on the, no, I'm on the sales tax because that's what you were talking about. Sales tax is the second page.
So sales tax, if you wanted to do 1% and 339, that would get you about $5.5 million.
Okay. All right, it's just hard to read. But I guess I have other questions, so we'll just continue through that and see where they're, see where we go.
Anyone else? Counselor King?
So one of the things that I think is missing, and see if you would agree, is the macroeconomics because taxes have an impact on the community. And I see the impact on the city. I don't see the impact on the community. So for example, under food and beverage tax, one of the cons is some restaurants may go out of business.
I'm kind of understanding it now as I see this.
So I would say that any one of the funding options are going to have some economic impact
Yes.
to the community.
And so and there's different under different options.
That is correct.
There are different segments of the of the economy that would be adversely affected from their perspective.
You could probably make the argument that certain options are more poignant to certain industries.
Right. And and that would be a, an important thing for our voters as they look at what we're doing.
I would say that's also an important piece for you to consider as a policymaker as well.
What's that? Would I repeat that? So it's important to our citizens, our voters, those macroeconomic impacts that are a major of what we do. It just doesn't affect city operations. It affects the whole economy of the of the city, including the businesses and the people that live in homes and on fixed incomes and and those kind of things. From their perspective, it, that's what they're thinking of, and I don't see those impacts listed here, but they exist.
I would agree those exist, and I think each one of the different options has their own set of individuals that it may affect more.
Yeah, the macroeconomic impacts. Okay, thank you.
Counselor De La Grange?
I just had a couple of quick questions. If you could go back to the slide that has the numbers, yeah, you could even go to the next one that shows just the year, yeah. So current level, it's going up, you know, and I know, you know, obviously this is a projection and five years out is really fuzzy, but you know, that's, we're trying to plan for the future here with this decision. So this is the projection we're working with. And so it's showing, if we do nothing, if we had no, if we had no staff, five years from now, we could potentially need up to 12.5 million more than we need today. Is that correct?
Correct. And I will kind of answer it in a kind of a backwards way, too. We've been cutting about $2 million a year, too, so that annualized growth does look correct.
Okay, so that over five years, it's about two and a half million. If you if you average it out over five years, it's about two and a half million of growth per year. I was looking back at past budgets and the actuals for the general fund of public safety, and they were coming in way, way below that. They were coming in, you know, maybe closer to like a million or so. So I'm just wondering if two and a half million is too conservative of a projection?
That could very well be. I will remind you that the first year, I have to budget it like it's 100% expended because that is Oregon budget law, that we have to take it as a balanced budget.
How does how does that relate exactly?
So in the the very first year of the projection, when we do prepare the budget, we can't count savings as part of the budgetary process. Does that make sense? So of the $3.3 million, do I think we're going to spend it all? No, but I have to show that we're going to potentially spend it all.
Okay, so these numbers show full budget, full spend.
So I would say the first year is full budget, full spend, and then there's savings incrementally built into years two and five because it does get a little wishy-washy as far as how that that comes out, which is why two to five is a little bit softer as far as the projection.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And then the other question I had is around basically the utility fee and the the way that that structure is, we have, it's per account. So, you know, depending on your type of account, you pay a certain amount. The growth of that mechanism is going to be based on growth of number of accounts, right? So if we want, if if we're going to see more revenue, we're going to need to see more accounts. And so do you have, and I apologize for not asking you this prior to right now, but do you have any sort of idea of like the growth rate of accounts on average over any length of time? I would assume it's probably pretty low, but I don't know.
I don't have the answer, but I would, again, I would assume it's pretty low and it's probably closer pinned towards our building and our expansion as a city.
And and the growth rate also, would it include potential things depending on where council goes with that? Are you going to include a cost of living each year associated with it like you do with the other utility fees, which will help accommodate some of that growth? And then there's the growth of potential rate increases. And then there's the growth that you're speaking of, which is more accounts in general. And then what type of accounts, of commercial versus residential, will bring in different different revenue streams?
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Recker?
Counselor King, you mentioned whenever we adapt or adopt any of these taxes and fees that has an impact on the community, I would like some, I already have in mind what I perceive the impacts. What do you perceive would be like top of the five impacts?
Counselor King?
Okay, thank you, Vanessa. Okay, so I'll just give it to you off the top of my head, and I don't, I haven't quantified it. Food and beverage tax, it it puts an added burden on one of the few remaining industries that's healthy in our economy, tourism. And I don't know if you've been out to eat lately. Judy and I have been blessed so, and she likes to go out to eat, so we don't do anything else except do that. But so we go out and the the increase has been fairly dramatic in price this year. The other thing is the Family Leave Act has increased operating costs significantly. The $500,000 gross income tax, 1% from the state level that was imposed on businesses adversely affects them. It's not on the net, it's on the gross. And then you also have a transportation tax. So the small businesses are getting taxed not only proposed by us but by the state. And some of those taxes, especially the family leave, could be significant. So when we look at the the food and beverage tax of, let's say if it was going to fund everything, including the additional personnel that we want of 10 to 11%, if I read that right, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that adds another 10 to 12% on to your food bill, which they can pass on to the customer. Then the question becomes, how does the supply, supply and demand? As you increase your prices, you get fewer customers. And that's hard to quantify. So I really can't answer that question with that. Okay, so now let's go on to the next one, sales tax. The same thing applies, only it's not just to the restaurant business, but it's to the every business. But the impact is is much less, and it's spread over a more diverse group of people, more entities. And so it's not 10 to 12%, it's more like 2 to 3%. And so then you ask the question, well, what, how does that affect demand if you increase the price of bicycles from a bicycle shop compared to getting it on online or going down to Medford and buying it? And I can't answer that, but but it's real. Okay, then the next one would be the water bill. And so over 60% of our our constituents are on what we call transfer, what the economist calls transfer payments, which is either welfare or retirement. And so they're on a fixed income. Social Security went up, what, 2%, 3% this year? And so if they all of a sudden get a $100 bill on their water fee, what does that mean for them staying in their house, given that their, everything else is going up in price, gasoline? And and I haven't quantified that. But what I do hear from listening to people is they can't afford it. And I think that they're right. And so how we go forth from there, because the services are definitely needed to have a thriving business environment, the the businesses need that, the citizens that deserve that, that they need to, when they call the fire department, that they get an adequate response to protect their home. And yet, each one individually individually said they can't afford to pay for it. And so that's problematic. And that's the issue before us. And I can go to solutions now, but I don't think we're at that stage.
I would like to remind counsel, this is a time for questions. Does anyone have any additional questions for J.C. before we move over to the consultants on the line? Can you remind me, it's John and?
Josh and Connor.
Josh, thank you, sorry about that. If there's no additional questions, I'll turn it over to Counselor Pell.
J.C., you had implementation time for a utility fee. I think you had that as 90 days. Okay, so what what'll take 90 days there? In other words, in my mind, it's it's real simple, probably certainly the simplest to implement of anything that we're talking about. So why does that take three months?
So that's a good question. We do have to program it into the software and then make sure that we test that to make sure the the very initial bill run. I'm already at max capacity as far as the staff I have to bill people currently. And so it's going to take some work for us to to get it into the system in in that kind of a timeline.
So and for Aaron or Augustus, if if since we didn't finalize that ordinance, if we were to vote on the utility fee ordinance, what's the lead time before that gets enacted?
We can have, if if there's no changes to the ordinance that was proposed to you before, we can have that in front of you at at your earliest business meeting. And then unless there's an emergency clause associated with it, it'd be an enact, it'd be enacted 30 days afterwards.
So 30 days, thanks.
If there's no additional questions, I'll turn it over to Josh and Connor on the line. If you would, please briefly provide us some information on the services that your business offers, and we can go from there.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Josh Davis. We're with the, and Connor Duckworth is with me. We're with the HDL Companies. We provide a variety of consulting and tax and fee administration work on behalf of our clients throughout the United States. The current work that we are doing now with the city is assisting in some potential analysis on the food and beverage tax or sales tax or other funding mechanisms the city has. We work with clients to sort of implement these taxes in three phases, the first of which you are sort of in now, which is the research phase, gathering data, determining different types of of taxes and the effects that you guys are all discussing today and how that may impact both the city and the community. And the second phase of sort of the architecture of these plans, developing the ordinances, the systems and processes to support the fee and tax collection. And then finally, the administration work that assists the city in actually administering the tax, providing the support directly to the community. the tax, providing the support directly to the community, things like, you know, online payment processing and the other items for supporting the filing processes with the community, as well as augmenting staff resources to get the work done, especially in a quick timeline. These processes are all sort of what you could expect from a vendor that helps out in these types of areas. And we're happy to answer any questions today, specifically related to what we're doing or what other cities are doing, or anything in sort of the technical aspect of any of these individual taxes. And thank you all very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Recker?
Thank you, Josh. The Oregon Restaurant Association recently sent the counsel a letter indicating that it takes a specialized software to be integrated with the cash register to put in a tax, and it was my impression that when that register, cash register was purchased, it included that. Can you explain that and make it clear? Thank you.
You're referring to sort of how the business collects and remits the tax?
Yes.
Yeah, most businesses have some sort of point-of-sale system that allows for the entry of varying tax rates or additions to be added on. Some businesses will add on surcharges or taxes. It depends on obviously what those individual restaurants or food establishments are using, but almost all of them at this point, especially with the onset of primarily taking electronic payments, have those. For those that don't and are still doing all of their items, you know, with paper, they would have to do it similarly to how they do any other accounting or bookkeeping, but those processes are typically built into almost everybody. In our experience implementing these types of taxes in other cities, we haven't had a problem with the community collecting, accurately collecting and documenting and remitting the tax.
Thank you.
And there's also one more thing too that I'd like to add, is when a new tax does get implemented, typically a company like ours will get a list of the businesses or community that is impacted by the new tax, and send out an informational letter to everyone, just notifying them of the change, when the change is going to occur, what percentage change it might be, and direct any questions to our support center, or a company like ours that has a support center to take care of those changes and give technical advice to the taxpayers.
Thank you. Counsel Dela Grange?
Yeah, my question revolves around timeline for implementation. Staff mentioned a couple of numbers. The number that really jumped out at me was a sales tax would take 12 to 18 months to implement. If that's the case, are there things that we could do as a city, or that you or another company could do to truncate that timeline at all?
I think there's definitely going to be ways for each of these to, you know, shorten or lengthen the timeline. A lot of it has to do, on the sales tax side, or the general sales tax side, really has to do with the newness and uniqueness of this. A lot of research and things are going to have to be put in place to make sure that the city's got all of the technical infrastructure and sort of adopting and writing the code in a way that is going to not present things like legal challenges or other items, that's very clear for the taxpayer to understand what a point-of-sale is, when to collect it. Online vendors, does it apply to them, and how does that work? There's just a lot of things, I think, that are going to go in there that are unknown at this time, and I think we're building in a sort of safety net there in timing to adjust and allow for those items. But there certainly are things that you could do to shorten that timeframe and get it done a little quicker.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Pell?
Yeah, thanks for being here today, Josh, and it's good to talk to you again. So, a couple of questions. One is, the information that the city gives us today, they show a pretty big difference on the timeline between implementing the food and beverage tax and implementing a sales tax, and I'm just wondering, does that sound reasonable to you, that the difference to implement those two would be so drastically different as far as the time goes?
Yeah, I think that, as I mentioned just in the last question, if we think of implementation in these sort of different phases, right, your research phase, your sort of architecture phase, and then the actual sort of implementing it once you know what you're doing, a lot of the general sales tax side is really coming into that research and architecture phase. Where the food and beverage tax, we have a great place to start. We've got plenty of resources to look at in the sense of how these things are done, what the challenges have been, and so other people have sort of laid the groundwork for you. On the general sales tax, I think there's going to be a lot more investment on that research and sort of architecture phase that creates some challenges. So, that, like I said, seems very reasonable. As I mentioned in the last question, I think there probably is some ways to help shorten that window, but I don't know that it's by enough that it changes what the estimate is.
Okay, I guess what I, I guess I don't understand, number one, I guess for other people in the room, I don't know if they introduced you, you're the firm that essentially runs the food and beverage tax for Ashland, is that correct, Ashland, Oregon?
Correct.
Okay, so you've got experience in this state with it, but my question is, in our presentation, we were told, you know, one of the negatives of the sales taxes, that there's no in-state models for the city of Grants Pass to draw from. I'm not sure if I understand why that's a problem. I know you, your company deals with sales tax all over the country, and there's thousands of cities, if not tens of thousands or more, that have sales tax all over the country. So, in the same sense that we could draw from, from, we'll say, Ashland on a food and beverage tax, as far as how certain ordinances may be written, why would that be any more difficult? Because there's tens of thousands probably of cities that have a similar ordinance across the country, that many of whom you deal with, so why would that be particularly problematic?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that question. I think, in general, when you look at locally assessed sales taxes, a great, maybe a great analogy here would be to sort of look at, say, a local income tax. So, many states have, cities have like a local income tax that's collected in addition to like the state income tax and the federal income tax. Those cities that implement that local income tax, similar to the state, will then rely or reference all the legal cases and the architecture of that framework to that, to the state law. So, they'll say, okay, similar to whatever your total adjusted gross income is on the state, you will use for your local adjusted gross income. So, you're able to leverage the higher level at the state or the federal government to sort of give you a lot of answers to questions that otherwise wouldn't be answered. Same principle here on the sales tax. A lot of those other jurisdictions that we represent have a foundation that they can rely on at the state level, that gives them a lot of architecture to all of the law, and who it applies to, who it doesn't. There's a lot of complexities, and as you very well may know, even with all of that in place, there is a substantial amount of cases that are brought to court and change drastically how sales taxes are collected and done, even with that architecture support. So, I think a lot of additional time here is just going into the research to sort of build that from scratch for this region, and certainly will be leveraging what we know from surrounding states and similarly-positioned states and cities to build that. But I think there's just some caution here, being the first one to dip the toe in the water.
Any additional questions? Counsel King?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask a question on those impacts. We talked before to the community, those adverse impacts or potentially adverse impacts, because whenever there's a change made, people always react to what is the worst that can happen to my business or my life. What have you seen in other communities with the implementation of, say, a city sales tax in other states, or a beverage tax on the business community or on the community in general? And I don't know if you have any facts, or it's just anecdotal?
Yeah, I don't think I could comment on that anything other than anecdotally. In general, part of the value and some of the time that comes into the research here is analyzing the impact on the business community in general. So, when you do these types of items, you might want to look at what's the effective tax rate, and how is this business going to be burdened? What is the overall value that you're providing to the community versus the taxes that are being collected and assessed, and what would they get for that value in other jurisdictions? So, I think there's a lot of items that you can come in. These are some of the things that you talk about that can potentially shorten or lengthen the window of time. Do you do some polling? Do you look at doing some analysis of the tax burden? Do you work with business leaders to do seminars and get the feedback so that you can analyze these items? Those are all things that would give you, I think, better answers to those questions, though I don't know that you'll ever get it perfect. We know there's impact there, but it's difficult to say what it was. I can say that we've never seen any drastic problems from an implementation of a tax such as this.
Thank you, Counsel Lovelace?
Yes, I have a question. I know that there's a fee that goes back to the businesses when they do collect the taxes, and at one point in talking to an Ashland City Council person, they said that they actually, when the food and beverage, they got 20% that stayed with the business, which from my understanding was higher than is normally put forward. Is that the case, or was that just misinformation? That's one of my questions. And my second question is, is I'm just clarifying, food and beverage or sales tax, either one of them does not tax groceries, am I correct? Any green groceries, or I don't know what they're called, or?
Correct.
Pharmacy drugs? So, there are some things on both of them that are exempt, correct?
Yeah, typically when we're talking about the food and beverage tax here, we're talking about prepared foods, and so that would be, yeah, not include something like just going to the grocery store. So, you're looking at those items, same thing for a general sales tax, though you could craft the rules to include or exclude any specific type of transaction or industry that you wanted to do. With regard to the prior question, I believe Ashland and maybe Cannon Beach, I don't remember, a couple of the other cities, they have mechanisms where they can, where they can limit or create an amount of which can be passed on to. So, some will limit and say, there's this, you know, say 1% food and beverage tax, but you're only allowed to pass 80% of that on to the consumer. Or inversely, you could create a 1% tax and then only have 80% remitted back to the city. So, there's different ways of looking at that, but I mean, in general, when you're looking at these taxes, we recommend just adjusting the rate to what you want it to be, making it simpler to administer, so that whatever that rate is, gets passed on, that amount that gets passed on gets remitted and collected, so you don't create any undue complexity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pell?
Yeah, Valerie, I'd just like to add one thing too, as far as, you know, to answer your question, it's pretty much what we set up and what we want. I believe there's 13 states that actually, believe it or not, charge sales tax on groceries, which to me is the most absurd thing I've ever heard, but, so it's whatever we would, it's, we can tailor it however we want it, pretty much. And, you know, it's whatever our vision is, is what we would be proposing.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, I suppose we move to discussion at this time? Does anyone have anything that they would like to add?
Yeah, this, you look at these matrices and anticipated growth, and this is just not sustainable, right? Look at year five, okay? Food and beverage tax, 8% and a $40 utility fee in five years. And that's just, that's a meager growth model. All right, so I hope that everybody in here can kind of understand that we're not talking about a very sustainable model here, right? Yeah, it's important to look at year one, sure, but look at year five while you're at it. This is what we are planning for this community, and I'm not seeing a very sustainable action plan here.
Counsel Lovelace?
Well, I agree, and I also agree that we can't look five years out. I mean, unfortunately, in a sense, you kind of have to, but you have to also understand that every year, or every two years, you have to come back and reanalyze things. I mean, that's just the reality of what you can do, of what have you. I also think that this, something that hasn't been brought up, you know, and it is mind-blowing to look at these numbers and to look at it, but you also have to look, what is the cost of not having public safety? And that's not a cost that's easy to put your fingers on, but I can tell you that from the survey, the majority of people want public safety, and I can tell you as well, just from my experience with my husband's business, that it's a problem right now. We do have a problem with public safety right now, and I can, after listening to Ward, talk about the issues that he has with retention and getting police officers, it's a problem, and we have to do something. And so, I'm not one who's going to look at five years, because I know we probably will make adjustments, but I'm looking at one and two years, and understanding that we are at this time under a lot more stress than I'd like to be. Part of that is a result of the injunction, but it is where we are, and we will be under this, and it'll take a while to work either way, but we have a problem. And I know, like I said, my husband's business has continually had problems with gasoline stolen from trucks, from hit-and-runs. I mean, I think we can all see what has come about as a result of, and a lot of it's not us, a lot of it's from Salem, a lot of it is the family leave and those sorts of things. I mean, when you have, when you read our monthly reports and you see that we budget for 57 officers, and in the last month, 45 of them were available to work, you realize we are running on empty, and that's not okay. So, you know, I know you look at these big numbers and you say, oh, we can't do this, but I choose not to look at year five, because I know there will be adjustments in between, but I also know that there is a cost. There's a cost to companies, there's a cost to people whose insurance rates are going to go up, there's a cost to the public for not having good public safety and police and fire. So, I think we need to keep that in mind as well.
Counsel Pell?
So, D.J., when you're talking about, when you look five years out, what figures and what level are you talking about when you say not sustainable? Because we could, I'm not sure if you're talking about maintaining current levels, or adding 29, or somewhere in between. What are you referring to exactly?
Oh, sure, I'm just, I just picked, I just plucked an example out of year one, two, three, four, or five, out of the food and beverage tax and utility fee matrix model. That's all I did. I wasn't speaking specifically to any particular growth model.
Counsel King?
So, I was at the chamber meeting this morning, and very nice people, a sense of community, care about Grants Pass, aware of their business situation and opportunities, obviously. One of the things that strikes me is, under the present laws, people are already preparing to force this to a vote by the people, if it involves a beverage tax or a sales tax, and it would be nice to be proactive with that. That's not a bad thing, especially if we're going to go there anyway. The other thing that strikes me is, one of the members said, okay, so this is the headlines in the paper, you've increased employees by eight, next year another one, next year another one. You've just handed out raises, and I understand very clearly the need for us to do that, given the legal situation with arbitration that could make it even higher. But the headlines to the citizen is, okay, you're hiring more people, you're paying them more, and now you're affecting my business to cover that. And that does not play well. We need to hear that. That does not play well. So, as we go forward, we may not want to, at this point in time, solve this issue all in one year. And we may want to put it on the ballot proactively rather than reactively, because that's where it's going to end up anyway. Uh, and you can ask some people in the audience here tonight or today if you, if that's true or not, and double check me because I don't know everything. But I, I think that's where we're at. The other thing that strikes me is, okay, so different effects in the community are felt, whoever part of that community is being affected with, with the different taxes, that we spread that around and not just have it on one segment of our community. Cause I'm not sure that's, uh, the popular word of the day is equity. I'm not sure to have one segment of the community pay for everything, uh, and have everybody benefit is, uh, appropriate. The other thing I would ask is, as people listen to what we're saying up here, is it's going to cost some money. Unless you don't want it, and, and that's an option. Uh, we, um, and, and maybe we, maybe we need to go there if it gets voted down. Um, it's not a pleasant one. Being a business owner before, it was very unpleasant to me, especially when my life was threatened, but, um, I think that's where we're at.
Counselor Recker?
I guess I would be in favor at this time, just looking at the one year and determining what levels we're comfortable with and going forward. I feel we need to show support for public safety. We need to not hesitate at this point. As we go down the road, I think it's important to look at all the impacts that can happen upon the businesses. We need to be sensitive to that. A word I like to use is the word hole, W-H-O-L-E. You take the W away and you have a big hole. And I found myself having to eat my own words by not having the entire picture before me. And right now, we're just looking at imposing different fees and so forth, but I think we need to look at, if we don't impose those fees, what is the impact on the community and all the repercussions there? Thank you.
Counselor DeLaGrange?
Um, so, this is hard. You know, I think we have to look past year one because this is a huge decision and we're trying to solve a long-term problem. So if you're trying to solve a long-term problem and you're only looking at year one, I don't feel like you're taking all the, uh, information into account when you're making the decision. So, um, I'm certainly looking at the five-year projection that our finance director prepared because we trust our finance director to prepare these things. Um, and, and he, he even said it's probably a little bit conservative, which is good and that's what we want. But we need to, we need to look at the data that they give us so we know what's going to happen. So we know when we make a decision, is that decision two years, three years, do you not have to go five years, even just go three years? Is this decision three years from now still going to work? Um, so we need to think about that. We can't just think about year one, otherwise we might not make a very good decision. We all know we have excellent public safety, um, police, fire. I, I am, I think they do an excellent job and I think almost everybody would agree. And I do want to support public safety and I do think we need more staff, but we need to think about what that means numbers-wise. We can't just say we support public safety, we need more people. That's only half the equation. The other half is how do you pay for it? So, you know, if we're going to add 29 positions over five years, we need to look at, you know, how are we going to pay for that? You can't just hire all the people and not know how you're going to pay for them. So, you know, the numbers, even when we don't, like if we decided to not hire any new people, uh, five years from now, we're still going to be needing 10 or 12 million dollars more a year than we are getting now. That's a big problem right there without even adding any, any people. Um, that's a hard enough problem to solve. So, once we start adding, you know, 10, 20, 30 people, the problem just gets harder to solve. And some of these solutions we're looking at are just no longer viable. Trying to shoulder this burden on a food and beverage tax alone, it's not viable. It just won't work. That solution won't work anymore. Um, the only way that would work is in conjunction with another funding source. Having the utility fee shoulder that burden all by itself would be crushing, you know? I mean, the average, depending on what level of service we pick, uh, the average per month ranges anywhere from $30 to $40 over, over the five-year period. That's pretty crushing for people and, you know, triple that for businesses, that's pretty crushing for them. So, uh, we just need to make sure that we're considering all the angles when we're coming to our decision. I don't, I'm not, I don't have the answer right now, but I just want to make sure that we're really thinking about this good before we start down a path.
Counselor Lovelace?
Uh, I was just going to say, I, I agree, it's a difficult choice, but we've been talking about it for a long time, it's a difficult point. I would agree with Brian. I don't like to shoulder the, the food and beverage because I think that's just targeting one area. And that, in our case, tourism is big. We already, you know, do, um, a certain percentage of our, um, transient tasks goes to police and fire. So I don't really see wanting to target one particular, um, business in town. I would rather see a less of a tax and have it be more broad, more broad and also know that you're getting, um, attacks from people coming into the area, whether it's from the county or from outside the area. Another option, you know, if we need to look down the road for a taxing, sort of a taxing district, I mean, I know in my speaking with the Chamber of Commerce, one of the things that they were disappointed is, is that we didn't first talk about us, uh, adding more to our, um, property taxes. You know, they said, why didn't we have this information first so we could have put part of it on the property taxes? And at that point, we said, well, we knew that if we were going to do the whole amount on the property taxes, it'd be $3.70. And to go and ask them from a dollar 79 to $3.70, we knew what the answer was going to be for that. But once again, I think the key here is to spread it out over as many sources as you can to make it viable. I also feel that one of the reasons that people are so adverse to a sales tax is because the minute they get a sales tax in, people are going to automatically say that you're just going to raise it, raise it, raise it. And we have the capability of setting a sales tax and saying it cannot be raised unless it's out of votes, a vote of the people. So that is one of our options. You know, we could go to 1.5 sales tax and say, which cannot be raised unless there's a vote of the people. So my thought is let's spread it out as far as we can spread it, but I also believe we are to the point where we have to do something. We can't keep kicking the can down the road. And I think we're in analysis paralysis and those, I mean, that's kind of a, you know, that's what we talked about many, many times. We're at analysis paralysis. We could sit there and kick that can around the room a million times, but at some point in time, we have to make a decision. So those are the decisions I think we need, we need. We need to say, okay, do we want to go to a food and beverage? Do we want to go to, um, a sales tax? Do we want to cap it? And if we cap a sales tax, we also can cap the amount that can be paid at a certain time. I mean, there's just a lot of things we need to do. So I think that, you know, we can talk about forever and ever about, you know, how it's going to be horrible. Well, we knew that going into it. We've known that for months, but now we're down to the wire and so we have to do something. So my vote is to do a sales tax, either one, 1.5 and cap it and say, put some caps on it and say it cannot be raised by, unless a vote of the people, and then we have to go out and sell it. Cause you're right, they have the right to do the referendum, that's, they have that right. But we also have the right to say, well, do you want public safety? What is the cost of public safety? And what does it mean to you? So, you know, that's why I think spreading it as far as we can to as many people as possible, and if they want to do a referendum, that's their right. And if they vote it down and we have to cut officers, then they're responsible for that because I'm not going to be responsible because I know the importance of public safety and I know how hard it is to recruit and how hard it is. All right, now police, Portland Public Police are down 90 officers, so they can't get them anyway to apply. Who wants to be a police officer right now? I mean, those are the things you have to look at. So those are my thoughts. And I also have always believed that a water fee increase, I think, if you look at most communities, like I said, there's over 56 communities that have a water fee on their, uh, public safety fee on their water bill. Well, there's also probably more than that who have a park fee, park, we don't have a park fee on ours. We have, that's part of our general fund. So, you know, there's just a lot of, a lot of things that people have done. People have, some people have park districts. If you don't have a park district, you have a park maintenance fee. We don't have that. And I think people need to understand, hey, we're just putting it under public safety so that we can pull our parks out of our general fund. That's our choice. But we could implement a park, a park fee, a public safety fee, we could do a lot of those things. So, you know, I don't want to be afraid of a referendum. I, I went into this knowing that was a possibility. It, it's always a possibility. We could be recalled, we could do a referendum, whatever, but what is the cost of not having public safety? So I think we just need to step up to the plate, make a decision and go out and convince the voters that that's what they need or what we need to keep them safe.
Counselor Pell?
Yeah, I basically agree with, with you, Val. I mean, we've got to do something. So to me, I, I get to the point where, and I'm really, I really appreciate, um, this page for counselors and I, too bad, no, I don't know if people in the audience see this, but the one that Brian, um, came up with, it kind of simplifies it, uh, for council and, um, be good if people in the audience can get a copy of it. I'm sure we can email it to you if you want. But it basically just lays out, uh, the five different, um, public safety staffing possibilities between no increase to 29 positions increased, goes through year five, but then whatever combinations of things that we would need to, um, and it's just a little bit easier. It's, it's basically the same thing that, less detailed than what JC provided, but it's just a little bit easier to use. So, there's a few non-starters for me, for me personally on this. In other words, having, let's just say, um, if we increased public safety by nine positions, that's the, that's the third rectangle down from the top, we increased nine positions, which seemed to be somewhat reasonable to me last time. To only cover that with utility fee, uh, years down the road is, uh, $50 per household or, you know, $160 per, uh, small business, uh, to me, that fee is too high. And that's, you know, to only cover it by utility fee. When we have our food and beverage tax chart, you know, go down all the way to, uh, you know, the possibility of 15%, I mean, we all know that that's, that ain't happening. For me, uh, any food and beverage tax that would be over, over 5% is a complete non-starter for me. Uh, for me, also any sales tax over 1% would be something that I'm not willing to vote yes on. So if we had a combination, uh, in other words, I'm looking at, and as a result, that brings us to a combination of some utility fee and either a sales tax or a food and beverage tax. And if we look at, you know, what I consider to be the top of a food and beverage tax of 5%, then we're looking at a utility fee depending on, uh, the level of service in the $25 a month range, um, for, uh, the increase in nine, nine positions.
That's for the five-year period?
Well, we can look at, uh, okay. Well, that's not, that's not the, okay, the bottom line, so it's the 5% down at, uh, that would be half of that, 5% plus, uh, 50/50 would be 24, would be five. Yeah, the five, I, I'll have to answer that in a moment. So anyway, I'm, I'm looking at one, a combination of either a sales tax of maximum of 1% plus utility fee or a food and beverage tax of a maximum of 5% plus the utility fee. Then the question just becomes for me, which one of the options I would want to pick, whether it's zero additions, in other words, current staffing or adding nine positions? So, um, but one of, one of those two options is what I'm looking for, the combination of a 1% sales tax plus the required utility fee or a combination of a 5% food and beverage tax plus whatever utility fee would be required because I don't want to, I don't want to balance this budget just on the utility fee alone. So 1% and 5% would be my, my, my maximum rates for those two taxes.
Counselor Recker?
JC, I have a question for you. On the matrix before us with the food and beverage tax and utility fee, is this representing 19 positions, 29 positions, or nine positions from year one to year five?
It would be all 29.
In year five.
Okay, so, um, if we're not able to make a decision today, we could get information what this matrix could look like with just the nine positions?
It's here.
That's just a suggestion.
Um, actually, on that slide, I don't have it in front of me.
Is it in our presentation? One of the... Well, year one is only nine positions, but once you go beyond that, you add in the other positions or does it stay with nine positions throughout the five years on this matrix?
So if you refer to this slide, which is the partial blue and, thank you, Aaron.
So that would be nine positions, okay.
So that gives you the, the first year of the nine positions and what that potential increase is looking like. And you can back your way into the matrix just to do the nine FTE. And so that would be the 14 and a half million dollars through year five. And so if you just subtract about $2 million from year five, that would be about 12 and a half million dollars for year four.
If you go to the next slide, it's a lot bigger.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, what I'm trying to do is see if we can inter, interpret that into what the fees would be.
So with the nine positions, you're going to add 4.8 to 2.5 for year two for a total of...
14.
7.3. And then all the way through all five years is 14 and a half million dollars.
Okay.
So you could find the 14 and a half million dollars on the, on the matrix and try and back into there for year five and/or any lesser amount.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Counselor Lovelace?
I, I just have a question. This is, of course, goes back to the questions of the, the balloon payment, which comes forth in '27, am I correct? Go back, Aaron, bring it back to the, where there, we saw the increases over the years, two, three, why, yeah, why it jumps in 20, is that 26?
It's 28.
Is it 28 that it comes to? And that's why that big bloom there?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, and I will be quite honest with you is that, you know, we can go back and have that discussion about the, the, um, public safety building that we did build and remind people where we were with public safety when we made the decision to build that station, I mean, that building and where we would be today if we had not built that building. So you can always, you know, say, well, that was silly, a silly mistake to make, but at the same time, we did build that building. It has been a tremendous asset to our community. Before, our police were in the Kewaunee County Courthouse and our dispatch was in the basement. So, you know, where we have come from at that point to where we are now, um, that was just something that happened. But I do, and I'm aware that there is that payment that's going to need to come forward, which to me, um, I could see moving up to, and I also believe that because this is something that we've always done, we've always kept a fu, a, a cash fund for delinquencies. We've always kind of taken some money and put it and given it to either, I don't know the thing, at one point in time, it was the church, I don't know if it was St. Pincethival or whatever, the river church, and they, because they had the capability of figuring out incomes, because that's something we don't have, the capacity, I was told at the time, to do, that they would hand out and help people with their water bills when they couldn't pay their water bills. So that's always been kind of a slush fund that we built into it. And I personally think that's not a bad idea, that as we go forward with our water fee, there will be more delinquencies. And that's just the reality and people can't apply for assistance to get help when they can't pay those bills. So, you know, I can see looking at this matrix and maybe I'm... see, looking at this matrix, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, it's, it's a hard one for me, but I can see that if we had, say, a $15 fee on our water fee, and a 1%, that brings in nine, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm reading this correctly, would bring in $9.4 million. And am I correct, J.C.? I'm just kind of trying to see if I'm reading this thing correct.
You're kind of in between boxes with what you said. So you said $15, so I would put you closer to $9 million.
Okay. So that would bring in about $9 million. And that would get us through the next few years. And then we would have the opportunity to kind of figure out where we're at and where we can go from then. And hopefully, that would give us an idea, because we are going to have to deal with that balloon payment. And it needs to be brought out to the public that that is there. I don't want to be, anybody to be surprised by that, because I'm not surprised, because I knew it was coming. That was a decision that the council in 2018 made, because we felt it was vital that we move forward with building a public safety building. So that's just kind of where we're at. So personally, I, I would go with a $15 fee, get it instituted as soon as possible, and go back to start working on putting a 1 or 1.5, depending upon if you want to be proactive and have more money to put away. And, because we have to talk about it every year. I mean, that's an ongoing thing. We can't, I, I will not, I will not allow myself to be paralyzed by seeing those five-year out numbers, because things change in now, between now and then.
Counselor King? I think that's a hand?
You know, it's, 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 it's hard on everybody, and it's hard on people in the audience, though everybody in the audience probably has an easy solution for themselves. I, I think we need to provide some focus up here and some solutions. I think Rob Pell did a good job of summarizing some choices. I think we need to consider reducing the number of additional positions at this point in time. I personally would favor the nine. And I think we need to look at a combination to spread the effort between all members of our community, because we all benefit from it. And whether it's sales or food and beverage, I, I kind of like supporting where Rob was at in terms of the initial limitations. So that's only going to take us, recognize through year three, if everything goes as planned with our stated assumptions. And whether that's acceptable or not, or is it socially acceptable to go beyond that and increase it? One of the things that if we go to that immediately in year one, and it covers year three, then you have the revenues that you have to stash away for year five. And I don't know if these figures cover that or not, but that, I would hope that that would happen, and that, and then that would fit within the caps that Rob talked about, and we can move on. The other, the other decision point on that is, do you want to have the people vote on it, or do you want to have the people go to the request, a vote on it? Because they have the right to hold us accountable on that. And I, I, that's a good thing. That's not a bad thing, that we're accountable. Recognizing that if it gets voted down, then it's another scenario that isn't very healthy for the community, for the businesses, for any of us. And, but that is a decision point we need to make. Do we want to go to the election? If we did go to an election, it would cost us more time. If we let them decide whether they want to take it to an election, which is their right to do so, and I would never take that away from them, that we just respect that and move forward in a, in a timely manner, would be timely for us, and then deal with it if, if they decide to do that, and exercise their rights. So let's provide some focus, and the parameters that Rob talked about, I think are good ones to start with. And the only decision point that I would have left then is, is it a sales tax or a food and beverage tax?
Counselor Pell?
Yeah, I wish I was able to confidently look out five years better, but I'll, I'll settle for three for now. And definitely want to hear what everyone else, what all the other councilors have to say, because I was the only ones today that are allowed to speak on this. But I would like to bring forward, potentially to a business meeting, either two, two, two different scenarios. One would be a, a roughly, roughly 17 or 18% or 18, $18 fee on the utility fee, along with 5% food and beverage tax, which would bring in around $9 million. And so that would be, if you can find that on your, your food and beverage matrix, go down to 5%. On the left column, go to 20.34 at the top, 16.95, and somewhere in between there, brings us about $9 million. That would be one option we could bring to a business meeting, along with, I think, the option that Valerie talked about, which is a 1% on the sales tax, along with roughly $15 on the utility fee, which also brings in about $9 million. And we could bring both of those to a Wednesday business meeting, at which time we would have, I'm sure, lots of time for public comment. And I'm sure we'll get a lot of public comment. And, but we would have essentially moved forward, because I don't think we're going to get any more data than we have right now. So I'd like to bring both of those to a Wednesday business meeting, and the council could decide which one of those. We then have focused down a bit. We'd give the public something that they can then support or protest, rather than just backroom rumblings. We can, they can support or protest either one of those two things, and then we could, we could vote on it. And then if we end up with a referendum situation, that's what we end up with.
Counselor Fraser?
I think there's merit to that, opening up public comment. I would like to consider implementation of a utility bill that allows for a little bit of growth, and putting any kind of tax whatsoever, whether it's food or beverage, or general sales tax, and let the constituency decide. If they say yes, then we've succeeded. And if they say no, we have some more exercising to do. But I think the wise choice at this point is serious consideration of allowing the voters to decide whether or not we implement a tax.
Counselor Dela Grange?
I remember not too long ago, this council was resolute in taking action to make sure public safety was made whole unilaterally. So it's, it's interesting to see how that's changing a little bit now. I'm hearing that's not the case with some people anymore. One thing that I think we probably could all agree on, and that we have talked about several times, is having a distinct special, like forum event, where this is the topic. It's not, it's not a business meeting with all kinds of other things. It's, it's a special forum where this is the only topic, council is there, and anyone and everyone that wants to come speak on it can speak on it. I think that this decision warrants that kind of forum. And I know that Joel and others have wanted to have that public input opportunity for everybody. So before we make a decision, I really hope that we can ask the city manager to organize and schedule a forum on this, so we can get really good public in-person input. I would like that. Couple other things. And I just happened to remember I had this in my folder, and this is from a report, and I'm sorry, Jason, I don't know exactly the report, but at the bottom it says, "Strategic Plan for Water and Wastewater." And there's a table in here, and it shows metrics and the quartile performance of each of our metrics. And the metrics for service affordability for water and service affordability for wastewater are in the bottom quartile of performance. And they're a couple of the only ones that are. So all that to say is that I think we already know that, you know, our utility bills are already fairly high. And I know that we've all heard people come to us with complaints about that. So personally, I am not in favor of having the utility bill shoulder this entire burden, because it's just going to be crushing. The utility bill's already high. We don't totally know what's happening with the new water plant yet, and how those numbers are going to work. So that's another variable that's hanging out there still a little bit. So having that shoulder the whole burden is not, I can't be in favor of that. The food and beverage tax is very hard for me, because it's, it's so focused on one particular industry, and it's so focused on an industry that, you know, a lot of times those businesses are very precarious, and they have very small margins, and they're very, I guess, at the mercy of the economy. So, end of, end of the tourist economy. So it would be very hard for me to, to be in favor of something that's that pointed. And that's actually the option that brings in the least amount, because it's, it's collecting from the, the smallest group. So it's the least effective, and it affects that group the most. So I'm not really in favor of that so much. The sales tax, as we all know, is a really bad word to say. And being born in Oregon, and being raised in Oregon, I don't like a sales tax either. But when you look at it, compared to the other options we have, it spreads the burden out amongst the most people. It gets tourists to pay part of it. It gets people in the county that come into the city to make purchases to pay part of it. It spreads the burden the farthest. And it puts the least burden on local residents and our constituents. I know it takes a long time to implement, so, you know, in all reality, we would probably need to implement a utility fee kind of bridge, so to speak, until a sales tax is up and running. And I could see the utility fee potentially kind of taking part of that, you know, maybe whether it's $10 or $15, some sort of reasonable amount. So we do have diversification of income. But I think, you know, 1.5% sales tax is not a huge burden. And it brings in significant revenue for police and fire. And we need significant revenue for police and fire, and that's the least painful way that I can see for us to do that.
Counselor Pell?
So rather than each one of us basically championing whatever, obviously Brian likes the sales tax as a combination, but by the same token, you also wanted a forum, so we could hear from the public. So if we're going to go forward with a forum, I'd rather not have each one of us talk about what our preference is right now. We just go forward with a forum, if that's what council wants to do.
In that vein, I do think it's important for us to create parameters if we do move forward with the public comment period, so that people understand the complexity of the problem, they understand the issue that we're facing, and that we are really limited on our funding mechanisms due to Oregon state law. So I think that that would be important, that folks have a chance to see through what the reality is on that. Counselor Lovelace?
Yeah, I was just going to add to that. I think the reality of it is, is the problem is we keep pushing it out, pushing it, pushing it. I think we're better off to make a decision today, then have the forum, because then we have the parameters, and we have as much information as we can have for that forum. And then, you know, at least give enough direction to where we, this is what we're proposing. And then if, after that we change our mind, that's when we write the ordinance. But I think that it would be better off to have more, of a finite direction before we do our forum. Otherwise, we're just going to be all over there, all over the place. And then where do we get from that? It's the indecision that makes it difficult. And I think at this point, we need to make a decision. Once again, I like the idea, as Brian says, I think that the sales tax overall will bring in more. It doesn't target one particular industry. I think we need to cap it. I do. I think that's something that we have to talk about doing, because I, I think the main reason that most people don't want a sales tax is because they know that, hey, the next council is going to say, oh, wow, look how much money you got. Let's raise it to two. And I do believe that the people have the right to say no. And, you know, they have the right, of course, to kick it down completely, too. But I'm saying, I think some people would go for it if they knew it was capped. I think that would be an important thing to do. I, I had a question, as whether the information, the public safety funding scenarios that Brian put forth, whether J.C. had a chance to look at them and say that they were accurate. Because I know, you know, I, you know, I got this, I got it, what, yesterday, but I don't know if the city has had the, the ability to look at it. You know, and then looking at that, when you're looking at nine positions, and as you said, I don't want to go and say plus 29 positions at this point in my life either, because there's a lot between now and then. But I do need, do know that we need at least those nine positions right now. And looking at that, and looking at his scenario, at 1.5 would be a $15, would make that work with those nine positions. And then at some point in time, we decided we needed more, then we also have the levy, you know, that we could, something else we can do. But I don't know whether that is something that J.C. has bought into and is, is accurate. And I personally trust J.C., being a finance director with numbers. So that's my question to J.C., whether we had a chance to look it over, and whether, how accurate you feel this is.
So I haven't had a chance to do the entire thing. I've spot-checked some of these, and they look close and reasonable enough. Again, I haven't gone through each of the scenarios, each of the lines, line by line, but in just spot-checking some of the, the absolute numbers, they look pretty close.
Thank you. And so I, I'm just, I'm going to make a motion, or whatever, to say that we do a 1.5 sales tax capped, and can go no higher without a vote of the people, and a utility fee of $15 to get pushed through as soon as possible. And that, and, and now you guys can talk about it, because we kind of have something on the floor.
Is there a second? Seeing none. Counselor Riker?
I guess I would be in favor of a lesser amount on the utility. And then if you want to consider, like, $12, and then a 1.5% on the sales tax.
Counselor Dela Grange?
That's funny you say that, Rick. I was going to say the exact same thing. I feel like we could get it done with 1.5% and a $12 fee. So, Valerie, if you want to make that motion?
I'm looking at my matrix at 1.5, and a $12, because it kind of falls in between the 10 and a 13, brings, would bring in probably around $10 million? Is that what we're saying? Is that what you're, am I reading that correctly? Okay. Yeah, I would be willing to make that motion, change that motion, the 1.5 capped, as well as voting beyond that, and a $12 utility fee.
Is there a second for that motion, seconded by Counselor Riker? The motion on the floor is for a $12 utility fee and implementation of a 1.5% sales tax. Is that moving forward for the public comment opportunity, or is that moving forward with those funding mechanisms?
I think it's moving forward for the public forum opportunity.
Is there an amendment to that motion? Yes.
I'll pay you that part of my motion, in order to move forward to a public forum, for public, with availability for public comment.
And Counselor Riker does second that amendment, we'll call a vote. Counselor Lovelace, you did make the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Opportunity for discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone would like to have discussion on that motion? Counselor Pell?
So if we're to vote yes on this now, that means what? That we are essentially heading towards a business meeting to finalize that, and in between, we would have a dedicated public forum before the business meeting? Or what exactly does a yes vote mean?
I would say that pretty well analyzed it, because I do want to have the public forum before we take it to a business meeting.
Okay. So we would take that idea to a public forum en route to, we would essentially schedule a business meeting, and in between, at that time, we would make sure we had a public forum. Would we, we'd be moving forward to do that with, with a public forum in between? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Counselor King?
Valerie, I just had a clarifying question, too. You didn't talk about the number of positions that would be filled. Before you said nine positions.
I think, I think I was dealing with the nine positions.
Yeah, so that, would that be part of the?
Yes, that's part of it. That's adding the nine positions.
Okay, thank you.
Whereas I understand the momentum behind this, to open up a public forum and public comment, I am unwilling at this time to show any favor whatsoever for a tax implemented on the people. So I'll be voting no. on the people, so I'll be voting no.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, the motion on the table is for a $12 utility fee with, coupled with a 1.5% sales tax, scheduled for a public forum to hear back from the public. That would include the nine position recommendations. Counsel Lovelace, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Counsel Riker?
Yes.
Counsel Pell?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Dela Grange?
Yes.
Counsel Fazer?
No.
And Counsel Younger?
Abstain.
And that motion passes. Six to one, with one abstention. Aaron?
Want to first say thank you, counsel, for having this very informative discussion. I greatly appreciate your sense of timing on when we need to actually take a look at some of these items, and your concern for getting public comment. I think the forum is an excellent idea. Going forward from the forum perspective, there's just a couple of clarities if I could get from, from counsel, counsel president. One would be with regards to the 1.5 sales tax, we have a projected range that that would bring in, which you see here. We'll be bringing forward then, unless there's any kind of council objection, looking at other communities in general, what is a general sales tax and what is included and not included, maybe considering what we've already put together before, back in 2015, as the baseline on what a sales, a general sales tax would look like. And, because I don't think today is the day that we have to go into the weeds of, well, what's going to be the cap, what's going to be included, et cetera. So we're going to have a general guideline, that if you're comfortable with, that's sort of how we're going to go off of putting the, helping put the forum together for information, and I can get that information to you on generally what we're looking at also in advance of that forum. And then the other thing is, with the vote as it is, and recognizing the timeframe that we have up there, if this is truly where we're going, then staff should probably, while we're getting ready for the forum, preparing an RFP for consulting services for sale, for a sales tax implementation, and if you're okay with us starting to do that work also, we will begin that work internally, so we can get that to you as soon as possible, to a potential index business meeting where you might be looking at adopting our utility fee code that we had proposed to you before, along with potential in RFP for us to move forward with trying to expedite the process of establishing a sales tax. So those are the two things, I just wanting clarity, if there's consensus that we're okay with both of those things, then we'll move forward with both of those things.
Counsel Discussion? Counsel Dela Grange?
I think that's fine for preparation to do that. The one comment I would make is, when we're talking about, when we have the discussion about the parameters of a sales tax, I don't want to focus too heavy on what the parameters were in 2015, I want us to be aware and to know what those are, but I really want to see what other communities are doing with regards to those parameters, so we have some different examples.
I can appreciate that, and that's where the issue comes in. At the forum, some of the questions, if you're talking about a sales tax, is going to be what's going to be included in the sales tax. So there has to be some general knowledge, and there's across the board, there's going to be differences between communities and states. So that's the uncomfort level, without really diving into that, and that can take a long time, and it could be that we may need to have the consultant come in to assist us with that, but from the standpoint of the projected dollar amount, the general idea of what we've worked on in the past, I'd be bringing that forward. Now in the forum, we can talk about how this is, this is the general proposal, we'd like to hear from you, this, and get the pros and cons of what we've included, and we can provide that to you, but we'll need to present something for at least a sense of discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Any other counsel thoughts?
I'm just going to agree that we have to have something to go with, and mine, if I remember correctly, 2015, that's when I first came on, but it was basically like we talked about, there was no drugs, I mean pharmaceutical, I shouldn't say drugs, pharmaceutical or green groceries, fresh produce is kind of what I, if I remember correctly, those were exempt, and that's, I think, the normal. I know that's what was proposed for the seasonal as well.
Counsel Pell?
Well, the very gray area in 2015 was service, service businesses, and the fact that, the way it was written in 15, the service, additional service businesses could have been added without a vote of the people, so that was very, very, that was very gray. So that would have to also be discussed as to, you know, it's not whether it's, okay, retail businesses, but service businesses as well, you know, are they included, are they not included? Account, bookkeepers, accountants, things of that nature, yeah.
So to recap, we'll move forward with a public forum hearing from the public on the recommendation to implement a $12 utility fee along with a 1.5% sales tax. Would you mind clarifying, Aaron, the timeline for the business meeting?
Ultimately, counsel president, that may be something you want to discuss during agenda review. When it comes to the ordinance associated with the utility fee, we have that ready to go, if there's no changes from the last time, we can just bring that forward. An RFP for consulting services with regards to sales tax help, that will take a, take a little bit for us to make sure we get, get it right based on council's parameters we've established today. And then we've got to have a forum in between. So the forum is going to take a couple of weeks just to get notice out, and then we'll want to take at least a week just to gather the information and data in a presentable form for council. I'd say we're at least a month out before we want to schedule it onto a business meeting, so maybe you'd be looking at the end of February, or preferably maybe the first meeting in March or something for, for an item like that. And that would go along the lines of our parameters here, if we can hit the target of March and have a business meeting, that, I, we, I think staff would prefer that.
Okay, wonderful. Counsel Pell?
And to be clear, question of Augustus, it's, it's, it's clear that not only could a sales tax or a restaurant tax be subject to referendum, that a utility fee could also be subject to referendum.
That's correct, because it's enacted by ordinance.
Just want to add also, yeah, any ordinance that council adopts is, can be referred to referendum, and also one item that we, that hasn't been mentioned is also the mayor could veto items.
Okay, seeing?
I do just have a question about that, and that's just because I was, I was told that there was actually an ORS, is that what they're called, Oregon, and my husband, who's usually pretty astute about things like that, actually looked up the fact that water fees, SDCs, and stormwater could not be referendum, so I don't know if that's, could they, because it's a public safety fee, but I've just, I, that's my question, because he actually read the ORS to me yesterday.
Indication is, it would still probably be challengeable because of what it's going to be used for. I think that if you're talking about those services in particular, right, stormwater, transportation, I think that's a little bit different, but because it's going to be public safety oriented, as in the monies are going to be used for public safety, that's, that would be the distinguishing feature.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion on this topic, we'll move on. Next on our agenda is the agenda review. Looks like our January 17 meeting has been canceled, those items were shifted to today, it'll be what we talk about next. Our next workshop is January 22, where we will hear from our committee and commission. Additionally, we'll talk about council liaisons. February 5 workshop is with an invitation to our housing builders. We will also interview the HBSC candidates, historical buildings and sites commission candidates, interview our budget committee candidates, we'll discuss our double erosion control permits, water sewer easements. Continuing to the next meeting, we'll have our ordinance development code amendment, multi-unity development manufacturer homes, ordinance amending the solar code, ordinance annexation for consent for 630 Lincoln Road, resolution, visit GP marketing and business plan, resolution approving a welcome center award, a motion approving findings of fact for the development code, and we will appoint members to the HBSC budget committee, CEDC, Parks and Tree Committee. Does anyone have any questions or anything they'd like to discuss on those meetings?
I just have a couple questions, just because there's a couple things that are kind of just hanging out there that haven't really been, we've gotten memos on, but we haven't really, I'm kind of unsure where they're going, is, I know that the amount for the warming center, that there's, there's been, that the RFP was awarded to, was it UCAN, am I correct, or was it the, I just want to clarify, because like I said, it was, and there was a possibility of two of them opening, I'm just kind of trying to get clarity on where we are with that, because I do think that is important, for us to know.
So yes, we have the potential of two warming centers, the grant was provided to the nonprofit, and they're looking at a site on the south end of Riverside Park, on the south side of the river.
Is that the Mint? I'm just trying to clarify, that was Mint?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
And then the, the second potential location is associated with UCAN being utilized as an emergency shelter only at their new site that they're looking at.
And am I correct that UCAN did get like $85,000 from the state? It was my understanding that they did get some money awarded from the state as our critical care, or whatever they are, I can never get that right, community care organization, and that was why they were willing to step to the plate?
The continuum of care.
Community program, thank you, that's the word I can never remember.
Yeah, they did get, get some of those, and they're looking at upgrading and changing their location, their location site of their facilities, and that would also serve as a potential location for emergency shelter purchases also.
And that would be a nighttime, am I correct? So the warming shelter would be a nighttime, and it was my understanding that the south one with Mint was a day treatment?
The south is day only, that's correct.
Navigation?
Yes.
And when will we find out whether, whether, whether moving forward, or we just, that's what's moving forward?
My understanding is that they're moving forward, the south one, and again, the north one is associated with UCAN, I think it's too early in the, and that, there's a lot of the questions that I would not be able to speak for UCAN with, because.
Okay, but that's, I just wanted to clarify that those were moving forward, which is great, I mean, I'm proud of our nonprofits for stepping up and doing something, because that's what we needed all along, so I just wanted clarity on that. And then the other one was, we also talked about the park, you know, that was something that we talked about, the Mint moving around in the parks, and we had an ordinance that I think you had kind of, I think it's actually right here in front of me. The, that one, all our reading that we have to do on the side, recre, no, it's not recreational immunity, that's a whole other concept, it's a, it's actually the, the ordinance about, services, yeah, services in the parks.
Yeah, so on December 8, I sent council a memo with an ordinance that I worked together with Mint and members of the HIV Alliance. It was something that we put together, and it is yet to be scheduled for a workshop, that's at council's discretion, and I let Mint know that I would inform them as soon as it was scheduled for a workshop.
Okay, and I guess that's what I'm pointing, is I don't see it on the workshop, does council want to see it on the, on a workshop? I mean, I think, you know, it's kind of hanging out there, it's, but it's January, it's past month, so I guess that's my question.
I did want to provide clarity on your question about the warming center. UCAN is, my understanding, UCAN is moving forward at the north end of town. The issue that they're facing is that they are required to amend the zoning in which that building is in, to be in compliance with their use, and I think there is an opportunity for that to be fast-tracked at the council level, to my understanding, with the buffers, the self-imposed buffers, is that the information that we received? Did I understand that correctly, Aaron? That they're, I think, 50 feet?
Yeah, the self-imposed buffers were associated with potential of, of a larger scale or more, or more permanent than just an emergency shelter type of shelter, whether it be pallet shelter, or whatever other services. The general services that they're wanting to do, yes, zone change is necessary, we're going to go through that. When it comes to the emergency shelter, the buffers don't apply, because it is an emergency purpose only, and so it'll be during those inclement weather, that standards we have in place. If, say for instance, in that location, they were wanting to do some form of more 24/7 shelter, then council would need to be looking at addressing those buffer areas, but at this point in time, and Bradley and I just had a conversation with him, I don't think at this point, that's right for any type of discussion, according to UCAN.
Okay, no council action needed, it sounds like we can just let that play out. Anyone else? Counsel King?
So we need to follow up on Valerie's request, and I, and I do think we need to schedule it as an agenda item, especially given the establishment of a navigation center as providing direction to get services, then I would think then the next logical thing, and I compliment you for getting together with a nonprofit to put together a proposal for us to consider, we need to put that on the agenda.
So I guess we're just saying that we would like to see it on future agenda, and so we'll leave it to the council president to put it on an agenda, don't worry.
Yeah, as long as it happens.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anything new or on this topic?
Aaron's waving that, so you want to say something?
You could put a light at the end of it or something like, no, I was just, Augustus and I were talking, and he did bring, put the memo out, so at this point, it can be at a workshop level, or if council has feedback that may require us to redo parts of it, then it might be appropriate for workshop. If it looked in general good to you, then you could potentially, council president with the mayor and, and stuff, we could potentially schedule for a business meeting, and go straight to a business meeting and skip a workshop if, if council's okay with the, the form of it.
If I remember correctly, I think Rob did have a question about it, but his question was just basically, you know, I guess if we talk about it at some point in time, so maybe if we just all go back, if you resend the memo out, because they get buried, and I don't see it here, if you resend the memo out, and then have us put forward whether we think it needs to be on a meeting, that might be, okay.
We'll resend the memo.
Thank you. Counsel Dela Grange?
Yeah, I was just going to say, with regards to workshop or business meeting, I feel like it's far enough along that we could probably just take it to a business meeting, and we may have a couple small changes, but I don't think there's going to be any sort of major wholesale rewrite, so I'd be comfortable with it going to a business meeting.
Okay, so I would too, so I just want to reread it, and like I said, I know Rob had mentioned a question in it, so, but I would be comfortable with it at a business meeting.
Okay, I think that concludes agenda review. Sorry, Augustus, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have a couple matters for council. First, with regard to the OnTrak building, the Yankee Pot Roast building, the city is in ownership of that building, and I had floated a $1 a month lease agreement with OnTrak until they exit the building, and I wanted to, I wanted to move forward with that as quickly as possible. OnTrak seemed dementable to it, and so I just wanted to give council a heads up that that's the direction that I wanted to move forward with. And the second issue is, we've received a couple of offers for a property on M Street that I'd like to bring to council in an executive session, or, or in a memo, one of the two, just as soon as possible, so we can get a response back to the prospective buyers.
Wonderful, that sounds great. All right, moving on from agenda review, can I please have a motion to adjourn the workshop and convene the city council special meeting?
Not yet, we have one more thing, don't we?
Oh, thank you. Yes, we do have a Parks Advisory Committee motion, thank you for that. The Parks Advisory Committee has put forward a motion to review the feasibility of creating a community garden on the vacant lot across from City Hall to include permitting, cost, and timelines. Does council have any discussion or any thoughts on this? We don't really have a procedure for committee motions, other than talking about them in workshops and going from there?
I just have a question. I just have a question. Seeing as we are going to be meeting with the committees next week, our next, our next time that we meet is January 22, where we will actually meet with the other, with the presentations, I don't know if that's a time that they could bring that forward to us as something that they wanted, I mean, I just, I just don't know really where to go with it, to tell you the truth, because I think we would need more information before we could make a decision, so whether we put that on a workshop, or knowing that we're going to see them, our next workshop. we put that on a workshop, or knowing that we're going to see them our next workshop, that might be a time for them.
So yeah, this is a motion that's a little more complicated than some of the other motions that come through the advisory committees, this one is outside the realm of them just making a motion for a minor operational thing. So this would require direction from council to do anything on this, so basically, after they've heard, you've heard the motion, if council believes this is worth further discussion and would like to explore it, then I would recommend you schedule this for a future workshop, or, and/or council memo, providing additional information on what it might take to do something along those lines.
Counselor King?
So I'm the liaison to the Parks Committee, and there's still some staff work that needs to be done, I think our staff liaison was going to get back to the committee with more information. There's funding, there's partners, it's in the middle of downtown, if we do something, we want to do it right. There might be parking issues, and so for us to take action at this point in time is inappropriate, there's a lot of enthusiasm, of wanting to get some things done, and that's not bad. We just want to make sure that we end up with what they would be proud of, and what would serve the city well. So we probably need to, I think Valerie's discussion is good, and ask appropriate questions along the way, and the staff will get back to the committee in the meantime, and perhaps they'll even further refine and do their homework and provide documentation.
Counselor Pell?
Just very quickly, the one brief concern I would have with that is that it was brought to us by the Parks Committee, and we're talking about calling it a public garden, I would certainly hope that it's not called a park, and I would certainly hope that we didn't end up with tents over there, but we might want to consider what it will be called.
Everyone can agree, I think a memo is a really great start?
All right. It seems to me that the committee wanted that information, they might just forward it to us as well, so we all have that information.
Yeah, based on what Counselor King was mentioning, maybe we'll pause on doing any action from the staff perspective, and wait until the Parks Commission has had another go at the discussion, is that what I heard?
Well, at the last meeting, after reading the minutes, the staff was going to get back to the committee with additional information on that city property, and there's been no discussion on who pays for what, or with the partners, and those kind of things, or what it even looks like in terms of parking and facilities.
So to me, it sounds like, and I don't want to go into a lot of detail about it today, but it sounds like maybe that motion was a little premature to go to council without those things first being identified. So I think there's some more work to be done at the Parks Advisory Committee meeting on this, and maybe another motion.
And I can, I can help them refine that, if that's the direction they would like to take.
Counselor Fazer?
Yeah, I would agree with you there, I'm very tentative about tasking staff and their limited bandwidth to investigating this property, to this motion. Motion acknowledged, hey, cool idea, a little more work needs to be done, I'm not willing to put the bandwidth into that area yet.
And if we could, council liaison to the Parks Committee, if we could share that with them, and maybe just give them a heads up before the January 22nd meeting, and let them know that we might want to hear more, and that there's more work to be done there. Okay, moving on to the adjourning of our workshop, and convene the city council's special meeting, can I please have a motion?
I'll make a motion to get out of our regular meeting and go into a special meeting.
Second?
Or get out of our workshop and go into a special meeting, excuse me.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Pell, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those in opposition? Seeing none, we will move into our city council's special meeting. And the first order of business is to appoint three members to the Committee on Public Art.
Counselor President, we did get two requests to have two of the items on your consent calendar be starred, just wanted to make sure that that was, that was there, and to be starred, what it was, is that they'd be voted on separately under the consent, and that was item A and D.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, A too.
And the medium color purple will be the appointment to the Committee on Public Art, there are three openings on the committee, to which five candidates have applied. It looks like the committee recommendation has, is Deanna and Michael, the reason being that they bring excellent experience and skills, also they bring continuity to the committee. The third recommendation is Sue Jordan, for the fact that she has shown support for her community, and it will be great to have another photographer on the committee, she is well-known in the volunteer community, and is credible. So again, it's three openings and five candidates. Thank you. Is this your rec? Looks like we have a unanimous vote, all eight counselors voting to appoint, excuse me, choosing to nominate Michael, Susan, Michael Holzinger, Susan Jordan, and Deanna Morse. Counselor Dela Grange?
I moved to appoint the previously mentioned three individuals to committee on public art.
Second, seconded by Counselor Riker. Counselor Dela Grange, you have moved to nominate the three recommended members to committee on public art, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace has stepped away, I vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
And Counselor Yunker online?
Yes.
All right, that, from the back of the room, Valerie raises her hand, that is a 7-0 vote, to appoint those three members. Next, we move on to the consent agenda, and we do have the two starred items as mentioned, the first being the resolution adopting the city manager's annual evaluation, and the second being the resolution authorizing the city manager to adjust the salary schedule in year three of the grant's past police association collective bargaining agreement. Suppose I'll go through and I'll read what we'll vote on first as a group, and then we can vote separately second. It's a long one. Item B is resolution creating the positions of GIS Technician 2, and amending the classification plan. Item C, resolution establishing the interest rate to be applied during calendar year 2024 to deferred development agreement monies on deposit. Item E, motion acknowledging the receipt of the monthly investment report for November 2023. Item F, motion approving the Development Code text amendment to Article 7, hearing bodies and review authority findings of fact. Item G, motion accepting the certified results of the November 7th, 2023 special election. Item H, motion approving the comprehensive plan amendments to the park and recreation master plan findings of fact. Item I, motion approving the zone map amendment and annexation findings of fact. Item J, motion approving the minutes of the city council meeting of December 6, 2023. Item K, motion acknowledging the minutes of the urban tree advisory committee meeting of October 9th, 2023. Item L, motion acknowledging the minutes of the urban tree advisory committee meeting of November 13th, 2023. Item M, motion acknowledging the minutes of the bikeways and walkways committee meeting of October 10th, 2023. Item N, motion acknowledging the minutes of the bikeways and walkways committee meeting of November 14th, 2023. Item O, motion acknowledging the minutes of the housing advisory committee meeting of October 20th, 2023. Item P, motion acknowledging the minutes of the housing advisory committee meeting of November 17th, 23. Item Q, motion acknowledging the minutes of the historical buildings and sites commission meeting of October 12th, 23. Motion R, motion, excuse me, item R, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Committee on Public Art meeting of November 14th, 23. Item S, motion acknowledging the minutes of the collaborative economic development committee meeting of October 26th, 23. Item T, motion acknowledging the minutes of the tourism advisory committee meeting of November 7th, 23. And item U, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Parks Advisory Committee meeting of November 9th, 23. Is there a motion to approve?
I wasn't here, but you took the two out, you took out A and D?
Yeah, we'll vote on those next.
Okay, so I will, motion to approve, I'll second it, your motion to approve all the other ones.
I did not, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, I will make, I will make a motion to approve all of the consent agenda without A and D at this point.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Riker, to approve the consent agenda minus item A and D, David. Counselor Lovelace, how do you vote?
Yes.
I also vote yes, Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Dela Grange?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
And Counselor Yunker?
Yes.
Motion approves. The first starred item is going to be the resolution adopting the city manager's annual evaluation, we typically don't have presentations for starred items, but we do vote on them separately. Does anyone want to have any discussion on the item before we move to a motion? Counselor Pell?
Yeah, I'm the one who asked to have this separated out. There's, there's a lot, for me, there's a lot to consider in this, but it goes back to what I know that many of you have heard before, what my biggest objection to this process, which involves not only the evaluation, which automatically triggers a step increase, and last year, I talked about how on the September 27th discussion, the, I think it was an executive session, with the HR Director, Diana Meji, when she essentially laid a lot of this out. And as I wrote to council last year, I wrote an email to council, I'm just going to read, she did a superlative job laying out the issues and providing comparative data for approximately a dozen other cities, adjusted by region and population, she provided one specific example of a ranking GP employee who was being paid roughly 20% under market rate, and those were essentially her reasons for essentially supporting steps eight, nine, and 10 being added to the pay scale. In that executive session, and again, last year, when I made this comment, I think it was Joel that disagreed, he had a different memory of what had happened, where I actually got this from, is I actually went back and listened to the executive session audio, it was about two hours, because there were actually three issues in that executive session, and I went back, and in that same executive session, in addition to Diana's comments, Erin also answered questions and made comments on how adding steps would improve retention, and in recruiting better quality candidates, but he never once mentioned or volunteered that he would personally benefit from adding those steps. And to me, you know, my point is, is that he's touting the benefits in that meeting of, to the organization of adding steps to the pay scale, without ever acknowledging he would be a beneficiary. And we all know that his contract is a mix and match collaboration, or conglomeration of unique to him features, that go above, in many cases, above and beyond what anyone else in the city has, in other words, it's very unique, 8% deferred comp, PERS pickup, ability to accrue vacation, and other things, so it wasn't clear to me...
Counselor Pell, I'm getting flagged down by Augustus.
Pardon me?
Counselor Pell, are we discussing something that was in an executive session between you, the HR Director, and the city manager? If so, that's not appropriate for this forum.
Okay, sorry, disregard what I just said, in the executive session, in the executive session, or at no time, I should say, at no time, whether in executive session or out of executive session, did manager, did the city manager ever tell the council that he would benefit from the step increase? On the night that we voted on it, or any time prior to executive session, he did not mention those things, nor did the HR Director. Does that meet legal requirement? That at no time did he, the night that we voted on it?
One, you're speaking of executive session items, and I can't rebut anything you're saying, but I do have comments that I'll provide to you in private with regards to that, that shows different than what you're saying today.
In private, that's fine, in public, what I will say is that the night that we voted on it, for the increased step, that at no time did the manager indicate that he was a beneficiary of it, nor did the HR Director. And as a result, I can't support, you know, any action that would, that would result in a raise for the manager, because I really feel that he had a fiduciary responsibility to let us all know that he would be a beneficiary of it, that's just, that's just my level of ethics, or my personal morals, everyone, you know, has their own way of looking at it, and you guys can do whatever you want, but I feel that that would have been very appropriate. Over and above that, I also, you know, feel that, you know, with the manager's total compensation being over $300,000 at this point, I just also can't in good conscience support any action that would end up leading to a raise. So anyway, for those reasons, I'm going to be voting no on this.
I need to correct a statement, city manager's total compensation is not over $300,000. The action today provides for an increase in the city manager's compensation of $4,249, and the number that Counselor Pell is mentioning is also including things like social security, health, VIB, PERS, wellness benefits, workers' compensation, and other items that are associated with a total benefits package, but not associated with salary.
Thank you, Counselor Riker, and then Counselor Fazer?
A lot of this information has been presented before each time we look at the salary schedules, so I'm a little bit hesitant on Counselor Pell's comments, that he's now saying he was not aware of this ahead of time, so, thank you.
Counselor Fazer?
I have a dissimilar recollection of that step increases as well, and by my recollection, had full acknowledgement that the city manager was included in those negotiations.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yeah, I would also like to say that I know he is part of the non-bargaining unit, and what we were doing was compensating and making it for the non-bargaining unit, so I didn't have to be told that he was there, I just knew that he was part of it, no different than today, I knew there could be a referendum, nobody had to specifically tell me that, that is our personal responsibility for understanding, the language comes forth.
Seeing no further discussion?
I have a, I just have a question. And I don't have a lot of experience with this, but I know that when I was at the school district, and we would do the superintendent's evaluation, there would be a period of time where the contract was in effect, and then it would have to, the school board would have to take action to do a contract renewal, and there would be, you know, a discussion about that, and I don't understand how that works in this process for the city manager, is it, because I don't think we've ever had a discussion about that since I've been on council, so is it, is there some sort of automatic renewal mechanism, or how is, how is the contract, I guess, renewed?
I can provide that to you, I want to be very specific with that response, and I'll need to pull that contract up to review that, and/or maybe what would be best is for me to provide you with that explanation, I'll provide that in a memo or email to council.
Okay, thank you.
The item is to adopt the city manager's annual evaluation, can I get a motion?
My hands up.
Counselor Lovelace?
I'll make a motion, adopting the city manager's annual evaluation.
Seconded by Counselor King, motion is to adopt the city manager's annual evaluation, Counselor Lovelace, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
No.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Dela Grange?
I'll have to vote no.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Yunker?
Yes.
All right, motion approved, six to two. Next order of business is item D, resolution authorizing the Next order of business is item D, resolution authorizing the city manager to adjust the salary schedule in year three of the Grants Pass Police Association collective bargaining agreement. And this also was a starred item, does anyone have any discussion or questions? Counselor Dela Grange?
Yeah, thank you. I was, I was the one that asked for this to be starred, and I just thought it was appropriate that we call this out and not have it on consent, and that we make a separate vote on it, just to call attention to the importance of it. It's hard for me to vote yes on something like this, because we're just, you know, in some respects, adding to the funding issue problem that we have. However, I know on the other side of things, we really want to retain the great staff that we have, and to attract new individuals that are great as well, so I just wanted to have it on a separate vote, and while it's hard for me to vote yes on this, I think I'm gonna vote yes. Thank you.
Counselor Pell?
Yeah, I also have a problem with raises at this time. I would say that this is probably the one group of city employees that I am willing to give a raise to for a couple reasons. One, I was, when we first saw comparables, as far as what other police officers were making, the comps were all with cities that were 150 miles or more away, and I just didn't find those very persuasive to me, even though that might be what an arbitrator looks like. More recently, when we saw figures that were across southern Oregon, including Klamath Falls, it was surprising to me that the, our police were actually making less than most of them as well, which to me tells me that our police are underpaid. The other, the other thing I would base my support on is I really believe that the police here probably have the hardest job in the city, and what I base that on is I really believe that if you took, by and large, most of our police force and gave them six to 12 months worth of training, they could do most of the jobs in our city organization, and I don't think that the opposite is true. There's very few people in the rest of the organization that could do the police, the work of the policemen, so, and policewomen, so for that reason, I'm gonna be voting yes.
Counselor Dela Grange?
I move to approve item D on consent.
Is there a second? Counselor Riker? Motion is to approve the salary schedule in year three of the Grants Pass Police Association collective bargaining agreement. Counselor Dela Grange, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
All vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
And Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Motion approved, eight to zero. Can I please have a motion to adjourn the city council meeting and convene the urban renewal agency?
I will make a motion to adjourn the city council meeting and convene the urban renewal agency.
Seconded by Counselor Riker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, we have one item on our urban renewal agency, which is our consent agenda, and this will be the motion to acknowledge the receipt for the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency annual report for the fiscal year of 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency annual report, fiscal year 2023.
Thank you, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Dela Grange, motion is to approve the receipt. Counselor Riker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Dela Grange?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Motion approved, eight to zero. If you guys haven't had enough fun yet, are you ready to adjourn?
You go.
Yeah, I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Lovelace, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you, everyone, have a good day.
All right, and thank you for listening, nice.